Stand for the pledge. Will call please.
Alderman Stray.
I'm here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Swart.
Okay, the first item tonight is a public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed amendment to the City of Oconomowoc Comprehensive Land Use Plan 2010-2030 and rezoning 21.22 acres located south of Lisbon Road and west of Brown Street, immediately west of Oconomowoc Country Club Golf Course. Jason, you want to give a brief overview, then I will call for comments from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Common Council, I will give the same slide presentation that I gave to the Plan Commission back on May 9th. This application is for a rezoning and a land use plan amendment for, it's the Lisbon Road property now known as the Towner Crest Senior Community Project. Okay. The project is located, it's on the south side of Lisbon Road, west of Brown Street, directly across from Spruce Court. It's also west of the Oconomowoc Country Club Golf Course, showing where the star is in this general area. So it's in the city, it's generally in the northeast part of the city. So on the location map here, you can see the area highlighted is a rough sketch that I put together, showing the area that we're discussing this evening, immediately west of the golf course, south of some town of Oconomowoc residents, and south of Spruce Court, which is in the city of Oconomowoc. That is the general location for this area. The darker areas shown on the map are wooded areas with trees, and then there's some lowland wetlands further to the west. This is the survey of the property. You can see it's 21.2 acres in size. This is what they are officially requesting to amend, the land use and the rezoning with this application. The city has a land use plan. It identifies every property in the city. It has a designation of what that land should be in the next 30 years. Currently, it was in the town, which was just recently brought into the city, lands in the town we identify as urban reserve, which is more of a holding zone until we know what the best use of that property is. So the request for the land use plan is to change this 21 acres from urban reserve to high-density residential. They're also asking for then to be consistent with the plan, if that's approved, to change, it was assigned a temporary urban reserve zoning district when it was brought into the city, and now they're asking that the zoning follow the land use plan to mirror that being the high-density residential. So this was the map that the applicant provided, saying approximate rezoning area is the green striped area. So this direct annexation was accepted in February. The Plan Commission recommended the annexation ordinance in March. The Common Council approved the annexation ordinance in April, and then the Plan Commission recommended this to the Common Council, the land use plan amendment and the zoning, back on May 9th of this year. That was approved with a seven to zero vote, both of those items. So it comes to you with a recommendation. So what is this recommendation and this change in zoning and land use plan for? It's the Towner Crest Senior Community. It's Presbyterian Homes of Wisconsin. There's going to be a campus with various levels of senior care, including a 24,000 square foot town center, then some senior apartments, assisted living and memory care units, 158 total residential units. This is the site plan concept. This has not been approved yet, but they are in for technical review on this right now. So you can see it's laid out in the same general shape of that we're acting on. This would accommodate that facility. This is an enlarged site plan. It shows two access points out to Lisbon Road with various parking, trail systems, and the building is kind of spread out. We have, these concept elevations have gone before the Architectural Commission. There was just some, one slight issue with the window color, but other than that, they were approved that evening on May 9th. During the review process, we're asking what will this building look like when you're driving along the road. So as you're starting and heading west and going up the hill, you see the one on top here, there's some pine trees out near the road. Those are remaining. As you make your way right down the middle, right across from it, that's the middle photo. Those pine trees are remaining, and then as you get further away, you have some elevations there. So staff, we had some initial concerns with the rezoning and the land use plan, increase in traffic, impact to the community services, the wetland impacts, the building massing, the utility impacts, the fire department coverage, can they handle this? And then the concerns with the remaining parcel, and since those times, they have addressed every one of them. They've conducted a traffic study. They've shown that this use is bringing less traffic than if it was single-family homes. They, as far as impact to the community, they have agreed to a pilot agreement. They've delineated the wetlands, and we know that they're not affecting any sensitive lands. They've changed their building design and maintaining as many pine trees and evergreens for year-round screening. The utility impacts, we did plan for something to go there. It's, this is actually less impact than single-family. They've added fire lanes as requested, and as the remaining lands, they said they would be in favor of deed restricting that. Most of it is wetland at this time. So if this is approved, what's next? Well, they need the detailed site plans. Those are currently in for review. We are providing them comments. There is a conditional use permit with a CBRF, a community-based residential facility, that would require a public hearing before the Common Council. And the certified survey map, that's in, and that's scheduled for the June 13th Plan Commission meeting. All of those items must be reviewed and approved by the Common Council. So I'll leave this up. If there's any questions or concerns, I know I'd be available to answer questions later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I'll take comments from the public. If you want to say something about this specific item, we'll take public comments on other issues after we complete the public hearing.
I just have one question regarding this.
Well, then I'll call your name when...
Oh, I thought you just...
No, I said I will call names. If, once I call the cards, and if anybody else has anything they want to add, then you can come up. But with the large crowd we have here on some of the issues, it says on the cards, comments should be limited to three minutes or less, and don't duplicate comments. That way, we'll get the chance for everybody to speak and give us a chance to deliberate what we're going to be deciding tonight. So first person up is Kent Tess Matner.
Thank you.
Hang on a second. And he is from Wauwatosa. He's a part of Presbyterian Homes. I will give the name and the address as much as possible.
Thank you very much. I am the Chair of the Board of Presbyterian Homes Wisconsin, and I just wanted to share again with the Common Council a little bit about Presbyterian Homes Wisconsin. The vision of Presbyterian Homes Wisconsin is to provide more choices and opportunities for more older adults to live well. Our mission statement is to honor God by enriching the lives and touching the hearts of older adults. All of us who serve on the board are volunteers, and all of us are dedicated to the mission in making sure that the facilities are first-rate and that the residents are well taken care of. For years, we, and we still do, but for years, we ran and we still run Avalon Manor in Waukesha downtown. We have Kirkland Crossing in Pewalki. We opened about two years ago, Dixon Hollow in Menominee Falls. This summer, we'll be opening a facility in Germantown, and we're trying to get a group of facilities in southeastern Wisconsin to help with, we do demographic studies as to need, and also if we get the facilities in an area, we can help with staffing and things like that. I just wanted to let you know that we run what we consider to be a first-class facility. We don't discriminate on religion, even though we are faith-based, and we don't require a down payment for people to come in. It's completely rent, rental-based, and we usually end up with a waiting list before we open the facilities. We look forward to coming to Oconomowoc. The Towner Crest, after Margaret Towner. Margaret Towner is still alive today, retired in Florida, but she was the first woman ordained as a minister in the Presbyterian Church USA. And so we have a history of trying to honor the pioneers, in particular the women pioneers, in the Presbyterian Church by naming of the facilities, and also usually have a photo and a little placard in the lobby explaining all that. We would love to bring one of our communities to your community, and can guarantee to you that it will be a first-class facility, and it will be a credit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Khabib. Is your address?
How are you tonight? Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I come here...
Please state your name and address.
Oh, certainly. Frank Khabib, Menominee Falls, Wisconsin. I come here tonight as a neighbor of Dixon Hollow, the facility in Menominee Falls, on the corner of Pilgrim and Lisbon Roads. Some of you are probably familiar with that part of the country. It's literally in my backyard. On a clear day, I can see it. If I had a better arm, I could probably throw a rock and hit it. Okay? But it's in my backyard. So I know the facility inside and out. I saw it with the gland before it was there. I lived during the construction, and I still live there. So I come here as a testimony to how these places are built and run, as a neighbor and a part of the community. It proved to be no inconvenience to our housing subdivision at all, the Graceland Housing subdivision, which is literally a butt up against it. None. We had no major traffic issues. There were no construction issues. Obviously, there's construction noise, but construction is a finite process. It begins and it ends. So we know that. We figured that all out. So that wasn't going to be an issue forever. We saw that. It was fine. They talked to neighbors when we were doing it. Wasn't a problem. It became a very integral part of our community, in the fact that across the street from us is Brookfield, to the east of us is Butler, and to the north, obviously, is Menominee Falls. In fact, our homeowners association meets at the facility. They have a nice big conference room. So our homeowners meet over there on a quarterly basis to discuss the issues in the neighborhood. It's absolutely been a godsend for us because we can walk over it on a nice day. Nobody has to drive anyplace. We have seniors in our neighborhood. They can just walk over. We also have people who volunteer there in the neighborhood with some of the senior residents. There have been no noise inconveniences, and believe me, if there were, I would hear them. If you come to my house, I can show you. But no noise inconveniences. In the past three years, two major housing developments, literally across the street from Dixon Hollow, have started. One is completed and totally sold out. The second one has just started and beginning to sell, and we're talking homes in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $500,000 in value. And so, again, selling well. And both were started after Dixon Hollow was built. So it was not an impetus to building. There's been no drop in property values. In fact, we have actually seen an increase. I get a card a week from a realtor wanting to buy my house. I'm not moving. I like it where I am. We have embraced Dixon Hollow. It's become a very important part of our community. We believe we have an intergenerational community. We have children. We have working adults, and we have seniors in the community. That's very important for aggressive, progressive community. And in fact, I have to say on behalf of my neighbors, we're glad it's there. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Lisa Albain from Presbyterian Homes.
All right. Greetings. It's nice to see you all again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for having us. I'll keep this short. I just wanted to come before you again, reiterating what Jason and Kent and Keith have said, and introduce my team as well. I'm here with Don Wazorik and Josh Pedelko. Don is the architect, and Josh is the civil engineer. A little bit of history about Presbyterian Homes Wisconsin. Press Homes Wisconsin has been serving the Milwaukee community since 1957. And you can see from the slide, the earliest senior living community with Press Homes Wisconsin was established in 1998. And as Kent said, the Fairway Knoll project actually is opening, we at CO next week in Germantown, Wisconsin, for our Phase One. Some examples of our projects that Press Homes has built. We've partnered with hospitals. This one, in the top-left corner, is Interlude West Health. It's in Plymouth, Minnesota. It's a partnership with Onlina and Press Homes, 50 skilled nursing beds and five care suites, and it was an $18 million project. Folkstone and Wayzetta in Minnesota is a full continuum of care. It's one of our larger communities. There's 255 units. It's a full continuum of independent living, all the way through skilled nursing. We have hotel condominiums and 130,000 square feet of retail space as well. That was a $292 million project. Woodland Hill in Hudson, Wisconsin, is a partnership with DeVita Dialysis. They're connected to our community as well, and that is what we call, it's a full continuum of care. And then Dixon Hollow that Frank was referring to in Menominee Falls, actually was a 2016 Top Projects Award winner. So it's a great addition to their community. Here's some photos of Dixon Hollow. We really try to incorporate the design of the building that complements the surrounding community. So it blends very well, and we take advantage of the outdoor spaces as well. Fairway Knoll in Germantown is the one that's going to be opening here mid-June. It is right next to the Blackstone Creek Golf Course, and very dramatic in design, as you can see, because it is Germantown after all. Some of the amenities that we have, that we will have in this community in Oconomowoc, a fine dining restaurant, linen tablecloths, seated dining menus with a server at the table. We have also a bistro. I'll show you a picture of that in a moment. Movie theater, state-of-the-art wellness centers, lots of gathering areas for residents to sit and either gather with friends or family members, so that there's more to a community than just their apartment. On the left is a picture of a bistro, very similar to what it will look like in Oconomowoc. And again, you can just see the attention to detail and the quality of the community. We take advantage of the outdoor spaces at the Oconomowoc site that we're proposing. We'll have a putting green in the backyard, beautiful views of the pine trees, as well as outdoor fireplaces, and I've had a request for a pickleball court. Before we ever go into a community, we are very intentional about doing market studies. And we use Maxfield Consulting Company that specializes in senior housing market demand studies. And they take into consideration several factors, three of which being the senior growth in the community, household values, and market competition. And as you can see from this market demand study, the independent living in Oconomowoc, currently 2018, there is a demand for 137 independent living, congregate living, independent living apartments. And as you can see, that number continues to escalate. And you look at the trends with baby boomers retiring, there's only going to be more and more demand. Assisted living, right now, there is a demand for 16. We're building 18. In 2019, when we opened, 2020, we only have 18 apartments, and we'll be able to fill that need. But as you can see, that number as well continues to escalate. Memory care is a different story in Oconomowoc. We have a commitment to our residents that currently live within our community. They don't want to move once they've, they live with us. And if there's a need for memory care, we feel obligated to offer that option for them to be able to stay within the community. Therefore, we are building a much smaller memory care community than we normally would on a campus this size, only 18 units, as opposed to 36 or 42. So far, we started this project in October, reaching out to city officials. We've met numerous times with the city planner. We've had opportunity to meet with you all as well. We've gone door-to-door and met with the neighbors across the street from the community, or the site that we're proposing to build upon. We've had individuals call us directly, and we've been responsive to their individual questions and worked to mitigate their concerns. We've hosted a neighborhood informational open house meeting across the street, and had about 20 to 25 people there. And I have to say, the response from the residents was overwhelming. They had a lot of questions, and once they were able to understand what we were proposing, they felt much more confident. The Oconomowoc Golf Course as well, they've got a water issue on the sixth green, and we're going to mitigate that for them. At this time, I'll have Don Wazorik come up, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, and she can talk about the site configuration.
And Don is the architect.
The architect, correct.
Good evening. I'm Don Wazorik with Inside Architects. I'm from St. Paul, Minnesota. And I've worked with Presbyterian Homes for about 20 years, doing senior housing projects similar to this one. Many of the ones you saw earlier are ones that we've done, including the Dixon Hollow site in Menominee Falls that we're opening soon. This site we're proposing is very similar, a mini-continuum, we call it. So it'll have the independent living, assisted living, and memory care components to it. And we try to be cognizant that while we're housing many seniors in a building, we like it to blend into the neighborhood. And we step down the ends of the wings of the building to meet the residential, single-family homes and neighboring components. So in the site plan piece here, we're looking at the north end of the building that is closest to Lisbon Road would be one-story in height. Shortly after, it would step back to, step up to two stories. The center of the building would be a two-and-a-half to three-story space where many of the town center features are and have taller ceilings. And then the arc at the south side of the site is the independent living apartments. And it would be four stories for much of it, but the ends of each end of the wing would step down to three stories. So we try to give it a more gentle silhouette, and approaching neighboring, single-family homes be like, similar in size. These are a few renderings of the proposed building. The upper-left one is the entry canopy, and that's that two-and-a-half-story piece. And then to the left, you see the taller, four-story independent living height side of wings. And to the right, you see the two-story assisted living and memory care wings. The top-right photo is the courtyard view. The tall windows in the center are the common spaces that would look out to the beautiful pine forest and the amenities we would have in the courtyard. The assisted living wing is the bottom-left, and you can see that the building steps down to just one story at the end of that. That's the closest to Lisbon Road. And then the end of the independent living wings, the lower right, shows the tall four-story portion in the middle and the lower three-story portions on each side of it. The building is approximately 270,000 square feet. We have a 72,000-square-foot footprint on the first floor, with all the step backs and the portions that are less than a complete story. The upper stories are many fewer square feet. We talked about the way the building steps and heights. We have 120 independent living units, 20 CBRF assisted living, 18 CBRF memory care, and approximately 24,000 square feet in the town center. We do meet the building height code, which is less than 45 feet to the center line of the pitched roof. We exceed all of the building setbacks. We've got a large enough site, and we like to give green space to our residents, too. So we're exceeding, frequently doubling the required city setbacks. And we're trying to save as many of the existing trees for the natural beauty for residents and for the screening for the neighbors, too. This view is from Highway 16. You can see kind of an A on the lower, and then a section through showing the elevations and the berm along the highway, and then the view up to the building. So you can see kind of the top of the fourth story of the building, but not much else, right where the A level letter is. If you go any further south, the berm completely obliterates the view of the building. So it's not going to be, even though we're sitting up on top of the hill, it's not as significant up there as you might expect from its sighting because of the way the elevations work. And as we're coming in, you can see the D-line, D-mark on the site plan. Looking in through the trees, you see the one- and two-story portions, and then off to the right, you see the three- and four-story portions. They almost look the same height because there's so much setback, so much further from the road. Looking straight in at the end of the wing that's closest to Lisbon is C on the site map below, is the one-story portion, and there's two stories directly behind it. But off to the left, again, you can see a little glimpse of the four-story portion of the building, and it doesn't look significantly higher because it's setback so much further. And the last one we did is kind of at the property line to the east, right by the golf course on Lisbon Road, looking back at the building, and the trees and the growth and things screen most of the building. And we've got a little bit of traffic study that our civil engineer would propose, if you're okay with that, Mayor.
John, just introduce yourself when you get up here.
Good evening, everyone. Josh Pedelko, Trio Engineering. Very important to this project and development in this area was a traffic analysis, which we had completed for this project. It evaluated Lisbon Road and the development, taking into consideration all the development that's occurred along this corridor and everything planned to occur along this corridor. Taking that into account with our proposed project, the findings of that were that our development does not change the level of service or functionality of Lisbon Road, which still, although the traffic patterns changed over the last five to 10 years with development, it still has a very high-quality level of service. Our development will not make that a negative or any worse. And what we actually look to do is make it better. And we can do that a few ways. In doing our traffic analysis, our consultant was on-site counting cars. They also were evaluating site distances. Looking at the site itself, we verified in the field that each of our access points had appropriate site distance for everybody on Lisbon Road and for people in and out of our project. That, together with our intent, which our site plan showed, to maintain bypass and acceleration/deceleration lanes at both entrances, means we have a safer, wider road within the public right-of-way, ensuring safe movements in, out, and through the front edge of this development. What is unique about this property, topography, vegetation, both along Lisbon Road and the slopes to the south of the building, we're able to keep the vegetation almost entirely along Lisbon Road, the exception being across from Spruce Court, where we have a few trees that must come out for our entrance. With the plan, we wanted to get creative. We're saving the trees, but backdropping the trees with an undulating, very aesthetically pleasing berm that'll vary in height, but really is, in a lot of cases, about six feet or more higher than the first floor of our building. What that does is really kind of softens the view even more of the building to the street, providing this earth and secondary landscaping level behind those pines from the outside looking in. And then to the south, we're saving all those pines intentionally, citing the building... And then to the south, we're saving all those pines intentionally, citing the building to work with the topography and, and that vegetation. There is a, a small wetland area in the northeast corner of this property, adjacent to the golf course, that's staying. What that means out, out, looking at this property is all the trees and, and small growth that's been coming up is staying untouched. Our project will retain our stormwater, manage it, and really kind of focus on the infiltration in, in an area south of the building. So instead of the water that used to go to the golf course, which, as Lisa had mentioned, golf courses experienced some standing water issues on Hole Six, we're able to keep that onsite, manage it, infiltrate it, and, and do that, along with a few other things to really help the golf course have a better experience, a better drainage outcome. Sanitary sewer and water main are both available for this property in Lisbon Road, adjacent to our site. Utilities are there. They work great for the project. I think it's a really nice use. What we heard in neighborhood meetings was a project like this really creates a park-like setting. We're taking the development and putting it in a consolidated area, preserving a lot of the land in green space and parks and trees. You don't get that necessarily with other types of development. This is a great way that a lot of the neighbors that we have met with really latched on to as a beautiful use of the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
There were some questions that had, had arisen, had been brought forward regarding, we're a nonprofit organization, and are we going to, or would we be willing to enter into a pilot agreement? And, and we voluntarily agreed to do that. We have several pilot agreements in place currently. The earliest one was twenty-seven years ago. It's still there, nineteen ninety-one, Lake Minnetonka shores, and then all the way through two thousand seventeen. PHS has never devolved on any of our pilot agreements. We own and operate all of our buildings, and we have never sold any of our buildings. We've served seniors for over sixty years, and we have a long history and, of that, and we don't intend on changing that at all. Our timeline, we have secured, and we have a secured and executed purchase agreement in place. The annexation is complete. The technical review is in process. The architectural review committee has approved the project, with the exception of the windows. Plan use, or the plan commission unanimously recommended our project, and we're before you today. The CSM, we're going to be presenting on the thirteenth of June, and then the conditional use permit for the CBRF. Benefits to the community is, we provide choice for the aging residents of Oconomowoc. And you can see from the market demand study that there is a need for, for senior living here, and especially the independent living. And we're doing our best to meet that need. We're not meeting all of it, but we're, we're doing our best to address the need here. We're providing thirty-four equivalent of full-time employees. We're good neighbors, low impact, and there's a ton of volunteer opportunities. Press Homes had over twenty-five-thousand hours of volunteering company-wide last year. It's something we're very proud of. Financial benefits to the city of Oconomowoc with our project going into that location, that Lisbon Road Special East Assessment fee of a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars will, will be paid by us. The city is going to be determining what our impact fees will, but those are large as well. And then our annual pilot payment, with a thirty-two-million-dollar construction budget, which we're still working through what that's actually gonna be once we've gone through the RFP process, is approximately a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars in payment to the city every year. And the city assessor, once the building is built, will actually determine what that exact amount will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joan Schubert? Just state your address.
I'm Joan Schubert. I live on Mohawk Ridge, directly across, right off of Lisbon Road, nearby. I have to say that, coming to this meeting, I have a little bit of, my confidence in the, the public hearing system has been eroded. I was here in winter, talking about the same thing. My concerns are not for the Presbyterian home in, in and of itself. I'm sure that's a wonderful project, and it's quality living for many people. My concern is the location on Lisbon Road. When my neighbors and I were here in winter, that night, common council voted it down, and then about two weeks later, I don't know what happened, but it was back on the agenda again. That, and then being told that we are to limit our comments to three minutes, and we've just heard over thirty minutes from Press Homes, that's, that's kind of frustrating to me.
They're the petitioner. They have the right to do that.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware of that. Also, so, yeah, not knowing that, that was frustrating to me. It is being zoned as high-density. Key words, high-density. Traffic studies might show that Lisbon Road can handle it, but I lived on Lisbon Road before the bypass went through, and our neighborhood suggested that we have stop-and-go lights on Lisbon Road and Highway Z. And the, the traffic study said, no, no, you don't need it. We've done all of our traffic studies. But those of us that lived there knew what it was like to turn off of Lisbon Road and how high dense, highly dense that community is, right? Between Sandwich, on a hill between, and now a bypass and a very highly densely populated Highway P. Within a year, due to high number of accidents, stoplights were put in there. So we can't just rely on these traffic studies. This traffic study is supposed to be taking into account the incoming homes that are to be built, but it's gonna be like three ti, I, I can't even tell you. I don't know, but I'm sure you have seen the maps for how many homes are to go in where Pine Ridge is and behind, between Lisbon and Highway Z. So those are going to be added on. And then we're talking about elderly people who don't make a lot of trips, but when they do, they have slower reflexes. There are so many beautiful settings in Oconomowoc that maybe have a safer on-and-off versus Lisbon Road, where people go up and down forty miles an hour at the top of a hill. You're looking into the sun, sunrise and sunset. I feel like that they picked it because they're gonna make a great profit, because it's a beautiful area. They're in it for profit. I'm in it for the quality of life for the people that live in that neighborhood. And I have, like I said, nothing against the senior living community. The memory care center that's just up the road is only half-full. So I don't know how those numbers were figured. Yep, there might be a, a need for it in the future, but right now, the current memory care and the current senior housing in Oconomowoc is not filled. So I'm very frustrated. I don't feel heard. I don't feel like the council or the land use committee are really hearing the residents. I feel like there's maybe already a plan. My husband said, "Don't come." They probably already have it figured out. But I felt like as a, a member of the community, I needed to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Tesman?
Thank you. I live on Mohawk Ridge also, and I had been at the previous meetings about this and spoke about it. And the one thing that I know, I, that came up to me recently is that, in my opinion, this really is not a residential property. There are apartments in it, but what it is, it's a commercial property. You have people that are going to be employed there. You're gonna be having meals served there. You're gonna have trucks coming in there. And, and if you look also at other projects like this in the area, such as Shore Haven and Lake Country, those are, are all located in commercial areas with high-density traffic lanes and roads. One is on Highway sixteen, the other is on Highway sixty-seven. That's really what you need for a project like this, not into a residential area. And Lisbon Road, in my opinion, all the way is a residential road. It is not a commercial road. And we don't need anything like this, this high density and the traffic it's going to present in the area. We simply do not. If a project like this comes in, in the Oconomowoc area, my recommendation would be to look at the Olympia site. There's plenty of room there, and it could work very well there. And it is a, a commercial area, and the traffic flow would work out fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this particular project? Did you have a comment you wanted to have on this project?
I just, I was going to ask that, and I wasn't aware of how far along it had gotten until, until I saw all the slides, but in the event that it doesn't take place, for whatever reason, unless it's totally a done deal, does that mean the zoning is permanently changed? Or is the zoning being changed just for this specific project? He's shaking his head yes. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the Presbyterian Homes? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to regular business. First item is approval of meeting minutes from May eighth, two thousand eighteen. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
No move.
Second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Now we'll open up our comments and suggestions from citizens on other subjects. I have several cards here. Again, if anybody has anything they want to say on any subject, we're gonna try to limit it to three minutes, try to get through as many people as we can. So I'll be calling names in, in no particular order, just the way cards, the way I have them. First, though, we have a presentation from Jerry Bratz. He may speak a little longer than three minutes, but we'll try to keep him as tight as possible.
Three and a half.
Thank you, Mayor. There were too many jump drives from the other presentations, so I have to get his set up, so bear with me for a minute. As Jerry's getting set up, Jerry was hired, he's with UW Extension, to perform a needs assessment for the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department, as well as the Public Library. He has presented the results to the Park and Recreation Board, as well as the Library Board, and he's gonna be providing a summary to the council this evening on the assessment. The results of this assessment will be used for future long-range planning, strategic planning for the city and the common council. So Jerry, thank you for being here.
Thank you. So we spent a good amount of time analyzing a needs assessment for both the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department and the Oconomowoc Public Library. This process started last October, and we, again, this was presented to the Library Board and also to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Board last month. Just a quick overview of demographics. As you see, the city of Oconomowoc has a growing population. Projections show, projections by UW Madison, Plaid Population Laboratory show that the city by two thousand thirty will have over twenty thousand residents for the first time, and that's almost doubled the population since nineteen ninety. Also, due to population growth, there'll be considerable household growth by two thousand thirty. Projections show that there'll be over eight thousand five hundred households in the community. So just a quick overview of this needs assessment process. We did a random sample questionnaire of both renter households and homeowner households within the city of Oconomowoc. One thousand one hundred and eighteen questionnaires were mailed out, and we had four hundred and one responses for a thirty-eight percent response rate. We also, I also did focus groups with youth, young adults, business leaders, and senior citizens that engaged initial thirty-seven participants that provide additional qualitative input to this process. We also, the Library Board asked us to look at residents who used, who checked out materials at the library from outside the community. So we focused on these four communities because they had the largest number of checkout at the Oconomowoc Public Library. So this was an additional questionnaire mailed out that had a twenty-four percent response rate, all from residents who were non-city residents. So we looked at a, this was, again, a random sample. So the margin of error for the library survey, combined with both city and non-city residents, was three-point-eight percent margin of error. For Parks Recreation and Forestry, it was four-point-eight percent. So just a quick overview of the, of some of the summary results of the needs assessment for Park Recreation and Forestry. Overall, over nine out of ten respondents said that the importance of having a high-quality Parks Recreation and Forestry Department in the city is very important or important. So that was over, that was over nine, nine out of ten respondents. We looked at quality ratings overall. Again, over ninety, ninety, ninety-one percent of respondents said that city parks and recreation overall, the quality was good or excellent. We asked participants in the survey if, how often they've used a city, or visited a city park, and if they've used or participated in a recreation program. And, again, there was high use of, of city park usage. Ninety-one percent, again, said they used the city park over the past twelve months, with the highest frequency being between three and six times. Forty-five percent, in addition, had used a city recreation program, highest frequency between one and two times. Then we looked at five-year priorities. We asked residents, over the next five years, to rank these priorities. Highest priorities were for more nature walk areas and paved bike trails. These are the only two where over half or more of the respondents said this is a high priority for the city. Then we focused on the, on the pavilion restroom at the Village Green. We asked participants, would they support year-round restroom? Seventy-four percent said yes. Only fourteen percent said no. Slightly, slightly over half supported a warming house, and there was less support for a fireplace or an indoor kitchen. Switching over to the Public Library. Again, over eighty-three percent said that a high-quality Public Library is important or very important. And we looked at quality ratings for the Public Library. Seventy-nine percent felt the overall Public Library quality was, was good or excellent. Only eight percent indicated it was fair. Then we asked participants if they had a library card, either from the Oconomowoc Public Library or from another public library in Waukesha or Jefferson County, since both counties are part of the Bridges Library System. And seventy-nine percent said yes, they have library cards. Then we asked about frequency of use of the Oconomowoc Public Library, and seventy-two percent respondents said that their household had made a visit in person to the Oconomowoc Public Library over the last twelve months, or over the past year. or over the past year. Most common visits were one to two times, or three to six times. 45 percent had accessed library information by computer. 28 percent had called the library to request information by telephone. And 18 percent had used downloadable media that the library provided as a resource. Then we focused on, I'm not sure why this slide's not working correctly, but we looked at five-year service and program priorities for the library. And Wi-Fi internet access was the highest priority for over half of respondents. Next tier of importance was children's programming, computer workstations, summer reading program, ebooks, audiobook downloads, and interlibrary loan. And we looked at space priorities for the library. And the highest space priority needs, as indicated in this needs assessment, were early literacy corner for children and a public computer space. So just quickly summarizing, again, the findings were a large majorities said a high-quality Parks Recreation and Forestry Department and a high-quality Public Library were important or very important for the overall quality of life of the city of Oconomowoc. Large majorities rate Parks Recreation and Forestry services, as well as Public Library services, as good or excellent. Websites and newspapers are the most common sources of information that people use to get information about parks, recreation, and forestry, and the library. Nature walks and paved bike trails are the highest priority for Parks Recreation and Forestry. Year-round bathrooms at the Village Green were the most popular potential addition to that area. Wi-Fi internet access is the highest priority for library services and programs. And a children's early literacy corner and public computer space are the highest space priorities for the library. And just finally, how this needs assessment can continue to be utilized by the city is, as you embark on a strategic plan process, this information can be used as the first part of the strategic plan for both the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department, the environmental scan part of the strategic plan. It can also be used, this data can also be used for the department and the Public Library to create strategic plan goal development, and use this data for benchmarking as well to measure outcomes. Any questions?
No, not right now, I don't think, but it was a very good presentation. I think it provided us with a lot of information.
Thank you, Jerry. Just so the council understands, and the public as well, I want to thank the people that participated in the focus groups. We can't do projects like this without volunteer participation. And for those who filled out the survey, we will be creating a, the full report will be put on the city's website for everybody to see, and will be sent out to all the elected officials so you can see the details behind the summary that was presented tonight.
John, could I get a copy of what he just read off of the slideshow, and the actual data, and questions that were the basis for the study?
Yes, we can provide that to you.
Not just the summary, I want everyone to back.
Yeah, we'll give you the full report. Jerry will pass out a copy of the presentation that he did this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay. Now we'll open it up for general questions or general discussion on any item. And again, try to limit it to three minutes so we can get through as many people as we can. And I know people are going to duplicate comments, but don't overdo it, I guess. Paulette Trevor? State your address, too.
Yes, thank you. 1438 Eldorado Drive, just a couple blocks from Nature Hill. Good evening. First off, I want to say that I am not Cruella De Vil. I grew up with Jiggers, an English setter, Tag, a golden retriever. Our kids had Danny a miniature Schnauzer, and Patsy a Shih Tzu. Our grandkids have Caliber, a German Shepherd. And we take care of Maya, our neighbor's black lab, when they're gone. However, I do not care to be around dogs I'm not familiar with. Twice last week, I had to scoot to the edge of a downtown sidewalk to avoid being sniffed by dogs. I don't want to encounter numerous dogs when we go to a city park. You can set all the rules and regulations you want. Short leash, pick up after your dog, keep them on pathways. And I bet that most of the dog owners will think that those rules don't apply to them and their dog. Dogs are supposed to be leashed at Nature Hill. At least 90 percent of the dogs I see there are off-leash. When owners are asked to leash their pets, they often say they don't have to. Their dog would never hurt anyone, and is very friendly. To me, it's unreasonable to think we could confront owners when they will not be willing to follow, when they are not willing to follow the rules the council sets. With the indignation and temper that people often exhibit, I am hesitant to call out anyone when they are not following the rules for their pets. Lately, the argument from owners to allow dogs in parks is that dog owners have to put up with children. That's the silliest thing I ever have heard. I mean, apples are being compared to oranges. I don't want to be sniffed or licked by a dog. I'm asking the city to please build a fenced dog park while the dogs can have fun and roam. I can stay away and enjoy the city parks that were built with the children and the adults of our city in mind. Thank you for listening and for considering what I've said.
Thanks. Dev Trevor?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Dev Trevor, 1438 Eldorado Drive, with Paulette. I also live close to Nature Hill. I'll just comment on Nature Hill, because I use that a lot in the fall, in the spring, when the weather's conducive to running. I run. And I love it up there. The trails are nice, you get a lot of good hill works. But invariably, whether I'm running in the early morning, midday, I always run into dogs. Quite often, I'll see the dog long before I see the owner. Big sign, everybody's got to be on a leash if you're a dog. But it really doesn't apply. Now, I will say, most of the dogs pretty well behaved, and they leave me alone. But I've been jumped, I've been licked, and when you're running, I don't like to be, I don't like to have to change what I'm doing. I'm always respectful of whoever I'm coming up against. Let them know I'm there, so I don't scare them. But when I come around a corner and I'm face-to-face with a dog that I don't know, and then the owner's over there, and they got a big grin on their face, and, "Oh, he won't hurt you, just like she said." And normally, they don't. But you never know. My point is, if you're going to have all these rules and regulations, if you're going to allow dogs in parks, how are you going to enforce it? How many citations have you written to people in Nature Hill for not having their dogs on a leash? I'll just ask that question, do we know? Yeah. So, my point is, I love dogs. I don't own a dog, and don't plan on owning a dog, but many of my best friends have dogs, so I'm very familiar with that. And I love, love ones that I know. But the ones I don't know, I'm, you know, not happy to interact with, unless they're on a leash that I know is controlled. And I've got kids and grandkids, and none of them ever sniff somebody's crotch or lick somebody that didn't want to be licked. So if that's, that argument. So, that's, thank you for listening.
Barb Jamerson?
Good evening. My name is Barb Jamerson. I think you might recognize me.
Just give your address, please.
893 Golden View Court, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin. Mayor Nold, Council President Alderman Shaw. And Alderman of the Common Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and your patience as I read what I've written. I've tried to be brief, it was difficult. I would like to address the fact that I find the city planner's initial report on Casey's to be negligent in completely omitting any reference of adverse effect or impact to 113 families in Thorough's Golden View Estates. And so we collectively have appeared before you presenting legitimate, I lost my place. Presenting legitimate adverse effects which would result from this project, only to have them cast away by Casey's attorney as personal preferences. I would like to note, at the past Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Stephen Ritt called out our 113 families, saying basically that we need to just suck it up. Something will be built there, and it could be worse than Casey's. Later that same night, riding the elevator down with Mr. Ritt, when I asked what could be worse, a comment was made by a gentleman I believe to be a city alderman, said, hmm, well, it could be a strip joint. Really, when we take time out of our busy lives to come before you and respectfully ask that you consider what you are taking away from us, jeopardizing our quality of life, directly impacting the value of our homes by changing our location from one minimal traffic to a low traffic to high traffic, and this does affect our market values. Instead, our concerns and statements are written off and flippancy, written off with flippancy and referred to as personal preferences of which hold no value. Is it not interesting that this attorney's assessment of the traffic impact is sheer speculation? Where is the traffic study? Where are the definite statistics, projections, and evidence supporting her argument? Her reasoning that there will be no new traffic, only existing traffic normally going by? Is that not speculation? And where's the evidence that the hazardous waste runoff, expected to drain into Casey's detention pond, to be located very near our retention pond, will not leach underground into our pond? Will Casey's be paying for the maintenance of our pond? Speculation, personal preference. Or is this acceptable to you because she is an attorney? In addition, when you add all this up regarding Casey's, we have been given proof. The city planner privately negotiated with Pioneer Ridge Condos the transference of a piece of land that would eliminate the need for a public hearing, of which we were promised regarding the apartment construction project. Again, another increase in traffic flow into our subdivision. And now, we have learned the city's Public Works Director's answer to relieve the stress of excessive traffic is to remove the gate at the north end of Wappam Street, put a stop sign at each end of the historical metal bridge, and let one car pass, one at a time. We understand this is your answer to bypassing the DNR and providing us with a second ingress egress. Seriously, have you all not thought about this through? There will be a constant backup of vehicles on both sides of the bridge as soon as people realize they no longer need to drive around town or the bypass to access Wisconsin Avenue more direct. May I be so bold as to ask, who is the city planner and the common council really serving? Is it normal practice to negotiate terms with a developer in order to shut down or ignore the voice of the people of the city of Oconomowoc? Those of us who you represent? There are so many better, larger, alternate locations within the city for Casey's business. How much and how far are you all willing to go to defy the voice of the constituents and destroy the tranquility, safety, monetary value, and quality of life we know today? I encourage all of you to continue to develop our city, but hear the voices of your constituents. Please develop responsibly. And because, not because, somebody is standing there with $100,000 contribution we keep hearing about, please vote this down. Thank you.
Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Angie Black?
I'm going to be really brief. I am that attorney for Casey's, to which there was just a reference made. I just wanted to let you know that we were here with a member of the design team to answer questions. We've given you a lot of additional information and effort to address public comments, staff comments, and comments we heard at the Plan Commission, and that's in your packet, so, but we are available to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
It's Diane, I'm assuming that's you? Yep. Just state your last name.
I have a bunch of different issues. My first one is, we have a real problem with parking downtown. And I don't know if it's all attributable to all the construction workers at all the major sites. But there were some of us driving around for over 15 minutes this week. You guys were in a common council meeting, I think at the rec center. There wasn't a place to park, not on the street, not in the back parking lot. I grabbed the last spot that's across the street in your little tiny building so that I could go see somebody in the police department. There is a horrendous parking problem, since these three big condominium projects are going on. And I don't know if it's all the construction workers, but I am not the only person constantly driving around this city to find a place to park. And I don't see that it's going to get better this summer. Here is possibly a solution. Have these three, three developments get together and get a shuttle bus from the, from the school district for the summer, and have, see if you can get some parking space available so that the construction workers can park in the vacant site now that's just by the railroad station where the business went out of business in March. They've got giant parking lots. You know, people would love to park their boats there, I'm sure, all summer long. But it would be really nice if there was some kind of shuttle service provided for the construction workers, because they take up too much space. And now I understand the space, the, the street, I can't even tell you what street it is. Right across the street from the church is going to be shut down for, for construction. You know, that whole street is filled with your construction workers. That's one issue. I'd like to know where we stand on dog bites. So I was with a friend this week, we were walking. 10 days ago, we had a, a black lab come out and chase us. You know, jumped up on the other person. We both had two little dogs under 10 pounds. This week, the same woman was out with her dog, and the same dog came and attacked her dog. The dog was in six hours of surgery yesterday. You know, the dog happened to live in my neighborhood. It's the third time, the third time that we've been chased, twice in the last 10 days, once a couple of years ago. So we filed, she filed a complaint. They called me and asked me if I would, and I was walking around Fowler's. So I went to the police station today to do it. And a police officer went to her house yesterday, took a statement, didn't leave a name. She has no idea who he was. I wouldn't let you out my door without knowing who you were. But she had no idea who the officer was. He's off for the next two days. He honestly said he has no idea what the protocol is. How many times does a dog have to bite before something happens to you? Before something happens to the dog? Somebody from the county called this other woman and told her that it's very likely you better start carrying a baseball bat or pepper spray, because a dog that bites once has it in their system now that they're going to go after the same dog or the same person again. So I guess my question is, and maybe it's too, you know, I'm sure we don't have a canine officer here. Does anybody have any idea, or could we get, find out, how many times or what the protocol is in the city of Oconomowoc, when a dog bites a person, or another dog, or chases them more than once? Do we have any guidelines as to what's supposed to happen to that dog? I have a dog. I have a therapy dog. She weighs 10 pounds. You know, it's very scary. Lots of dogs are behind their own fences, either regular fences or underground fences. You know, this dog was not, this dog was even, this time, it was out with its own owner, and it pulled away from the owner. Last week, the dog was just sitting in its lot, no fence, no underground fence, no chain, no anything. So that would be something I would like to know. And comment on, I was here two weeks ago, and you talked about, just, kudos to all of you who, I know it was a kind of a split, the mayor made the decision on the pit bulls. In the last 30 days, have been four deaths of pit bulls, including one in Milwaukee. All but one, there were eight in the last month, all but one were owned by the homeowners. They weren't stray dogs, they weren't running around, they were family dogs, and they managed to kill somebody in their family, including one in Milwaukee. So I'm very happy, I feel bad for people who have pit bulls, they terrify me. It could be any kind of dog. Dog parks. I would never go to a dog park. I think Oconomowoc needs a dog park. Do I really want you to open up pooping in Fowler Park and in the Banshell? No, I do not. But I think the city needs someplace for people who want to take their dogs, to run their dogs. I would never use it. I do, however, think that you can't put signs up on the boardwalk, no dogs allowed. People, hundreds of people walk around Fowler's. People, hundreds of people walk around Fowler Lake every single day. I don't want to walk between the cars in a full parking lot with my dog or my children and have to worry about cars backing out. I think the signs on the boardwalk need to come down as far as that you can't walk your dog on the boardwalk. Yes, there are always going to be people that never pick up their crap, excuse the word, but that's what it is. There are people that are not going to do it. Halid Vet is gracious enough to put out poop bags all around, people still don't use them. So, the gentleman who just spoke a minute ago about the parks and recreation, about focus groups, I didn't notice on the biggest group of focus groups, I would think the biggest group of people living in Oconomowoc are people between the ages of thirty-five and fifty-five, somewhere in that. I noticed all the other groups of people, and there weren't very many people, nobody ever contacted me, I'd be happy to be on a focus group. That group seemed to have been missing in the list of people that were in focus groups. Maybe I missed it, but I read it twice. I think if you're going to go ahead with this plan, community for senior citizens, you should at their expense write it in that a traffic light needs to be at the exit point onto the main road. Because I'm going to be a senior, I'm pretty a seniors now, I still drive pretty well. There's no question that our reflexes aren't always as great, and we don't always make as good a decisions. I think a traffic light needs to be part of the plan that this organization is paying for to get onto a major road. Bike tunnel, is anything happening with the bike tunnel that was planned that was kind of shut?
We're well past the three minutes now.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep this so we can get as many people to talk as possible.
Okay, then I'm done. Thank you.
Brian Lurch.
I guess I just wanted to start with, I didn't know we had any spots that we could even walk dogs here in Oconomowoc. I thought there were, dogs were banned in all the parks, but I thought it'd be great to have a dog park, that'd be, because like I said, I didn't think there was any place we could walk them. It was said very well already, but have lots of concerns about Casey's and the gas station there. I think it's interesting that with the assisted living, we've had a number of people come forward and talk about the good that they've done and that kind of stuff, there's nobody coming to talk up the gas station, like how the assisted living has been a great neighbor and helping folks and that kind of thing. One of the issues that I've raised previously here was the property value, and that was kind of poo-pooed. People said, well, there's all these other gas stations and, you know, that hasn't brought crime or any issues. So, I drove by the other gas stations and went up a block or two, and the homes that surround the other gas stations are very different from the homes back in the subdivision there. These are four hundred thousand dollar homes, very different from the really broken down homes very close to the other gas station. So, I think it's really a poor comparison that way. Because I do think that the gas stations do bring crime, do bring a lot of problems. So, want to definitely bring that up as well. But, yeah, I think that they are legitimate concerns and really feel that it should be really listened to. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Kurtz.
Hi, my name's Chris Kurtz, I live on Juno Avenue, right across.
You want to give your address?
Oh, yeah, N-52W-37203, Juno Avenue. My concern is the talk I've heard about the bridge and the solution for the stop signs and opening up the gate. I'm all for opening up the gate, I got no problems with that. My concern is the amount of non-vehicle traffic that uses that bridge. My kiddo and I ride our bikes to take her to school. I see a ton of kids come blowing out that sidewalk from Riverside Park, either go fishing on the bridge or come across the bridge to Earding Park, I think I'm pronouncing it right. My concern is that bridge is barely big enough for a car to get, one car to get on if another kid is hanging out there, if a family's sitting there fishing. My concern that that stop sign idea on either side would just not be enough there. I think there'd be way too much traffic and way too many kids running around that particular neighborhood. The streets aren't very wide on either end of that bridge, so to pose traffic to go two ways there is, again, I'm just concerned about bikes and kids and fishing and stuff. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Juliette Steitzer.
Good evening, Juliette Steitzer, N-52W-37140, Juno Avenue. This is my neighbor over there. Yes, did catch wind that there's been a proposal to open up the gate, allowing two-way traffic as a way to mitigate any traffic concerns that might be pressured, you know, pressure on that road because of the opening of Casey's. And if that is what you're considering, I would suggest that you reconsider that possibility. The bridge was originally left in place when Thoreau Farms was developed. In 2004, there was a moratorium for ten years on building anything, on widening the bridge at all, again, largely due to concerns for the residents of the area, but also concerns for the Thoreau Farms development that they also didn't want Lapham Street to become a thoroughfare. The neighborhood, the Thoreau Farms was developed with that in mind, with the idea that Lapham Street would remain a quiet residential place, and all the people who've built there in the last fifteen years have relied upon that not being a thoroughfare. Since that time, the railroad crossing that had been present across from that stoplight has been closed where Retzlaff used to be, now I don't know, I think the city, I think the school district owns a piece of that now. That, again, reduces the amount of crosstown traffic that might occur, but widening that bridge doesn't seem economically feasible for the number of residents that you would serve. And leaving, and opening the gate is, would be a catastrophe. If you think that, I mean, I live on that street, I live on the little stub Juno Avenue on the opposite side of that bridge, and I encounter my neighbors coming and going almost every time that I leave the house, either kids on the bridge, people walking their dogs on the bridge, or one of my neighbors coming in and out of that neighborhood. So, to open that to a huge number of people, you're going to have people stopped and backed up, blocking the entrance to Earding Park, blocking the exit to Riverside Park. And don't forget, Lapham Street makes a quick jog, it doesn't, it's not like there's a, on the north side of Lapham Street is a strange jog in the road where there's somebody's property. And then if you have two or three cars parked, or not parked, but waiting to pass at that stop sign, they will not be able to go up a budding Washington, it would be crazy to have cars backed up in either direction in that particular location. So, if that's an effort to get around the DNR rules, I don't know that there's a way to get around that. You either have to widen that bridge and buy out the people, or you're going to have to leave the gate in place and you can't open it to two-way traffic, no way. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Scott Hughes.
Okay, Scott Hughes, 388 North Lapham Street. I'm just here talking about, obviously, all this stuff that's going on with the gas station and stuff. Obviously, I can't stop anything that's going to be built that somebody bought and purchased there. It's not an optimal business to put right there. So, I've never been here before to say anything until I found out about the opening of the bridge. I live right on Lapham Street, many people here see me sitting out there with my dog every afternoon, and just the traffic that goes through our neighborhood is great. My only concern is opening that bridge where it will turn it into a thoroughfare, and we've already talked about speed bumps, which apparently we can't do, so we're going to add traffic going through the neighborhood. I'd rather take the worst of two evils with the congestion at the gas station if that's our only choice. I mean, other than that, I don't know what to say. I think it's all a bad idea, but once again, businesses have a right to open, I'm not one to stop that. Obviously, a little strip mall there would be a nicer thing than a gas station, but I have no control over that. My only concern is, like I say, the bridge, all the little kids in the neighborhood that I see riding their bikes, because they are little kids, out into the street occasionally, and turning that into someone going through thirty-five, forty miles an hour in a twenty-five is not a safe situation. And that is my major concern with all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Frominsky?
I'm sorry, I just can't quite think this out. So, I have nothing prepared, because I actually, Rich Frominsky, I'm at 562 Thoreau Drive. I'm one house removed from Lapham and the gate. I actually thought this was a sign-in, so I didn't really prepare anything. But from listening to all, to everybody here, and the emotions and passion that they have for the community, I want to ask the council and to you, Mayor Nold, isn't your responsibility as a council to increase the value and the value of life of the community? Within a, less than a two-mile span, we have four gas stations. How many gas stations do we need in two miles? I mean, if this was a veterinary clinic or a doctor's office, or something that brought value and to the community, I'd say I'm all for it. But a gas station to sell more liquor, sell more gas, to sell more yahoo or whatever the kids are drinking nowadays, I think it's ridiculous that we have to add another gas station where we have Speedway and that BP, and we have QuickTrip and another BP, it's crazy. We moved here two years ago, found Thoreau or Goldenview Estates, and it was perfect for my family and myself. The gates was a blessing, because just knowing all the neighbors and how people fly, not knowing the subdivision, they fly up and over that hill, and they come to a screeching halt, basically, right before the gate, fly backwards into Thoreau and fly back. And it's crazy. So, if this is going to bring some kind of value to the community, I'd say I'll for it. But just so that kids can hang out in another gas station, another parking lot, and that's my only, those two items are my issues. So, I thank you for your time.
Great, thanks. Mike Brink.
Hi, Mike Brink, 551 Thoreau Drive. I got a couple of things. First about the gas station, from what I saw based on the plans, I was kind of concerned with, I know that they were going to redo parts of Sheldon Avenue. Now, what I'd propose to the Casey's gas station is, instead of just buying that one piece of property to purchase the two rundown houses that are at the end of that street and use that, use Sheldon Avenue as an exit and entrance instead of coming on to Lapham. And then, one other question I have is, when I, well, not a question, when I come out of Lapham to pull out to Wisconsin Avenue, probably two to three times a week, I see cars run that red light, constantly. Now, I have seen police officers sit over by the VFW to try to monitor that, but it, I haven't seen an accident yet, but I've seen several close ones. So, to me, it's just a really dangerous spot. And then also with the traffic to open up that dead end of Lapham, my only question that I guess I would ask is, I know that there's a gate there, and I'm assuming that the gates are to open up in event of emergency with the fire department that would need to open the gate to get to the residence on Juno. What is the capacity of that bridge? Like, what if a truck or a heavy load were to take that route instead of just normal residential traffic? Could the bridge support that, even though it is a single-lane bridge? That's really all I have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Ledwig.
Eric Ledwig, 195 North Lapham. Thank you, guys, for listening. Been here for Plan Commission and Council. You have a unique piece of property with the Casey General Store, so I'm here to speak in opposition to that, as well as the potential to open the gate at the end of Lapham. You have a unique piece of property. I know what it's owned for, I know we're not here to argue what business is supposed to be there or tell a business how they're supposed to be. Nobody has come here and said, we don't want Casey's in Oconomowoc. We've said, we don't want an unsafe property or business in a location where it doesn't belong. Everybody that's here and in the extra room, because there are so many people here tonight, whether it's for Casey's or dogs or alcohol, there is a lot of concern because it's justified, whether it's kids, cars, people exiting Lapham, people exiting on Wisconsin, there are a lot of problems. Casey states that there's not going to be an increase to traffic. Well, there's already an increase, we just saw it on the research slide where we're going to have another three thousand plus people in town in the next thirteen-plus years. That's going to increase traffic. I'm more concerned about the change in the traffic pattern. So, now you're going to have people exiting on to Lapham, you're going to have people exiting on to Wisconsin even more frequently from Sheldon, with the hundred thousand dollars, that's not going to do all of that road, by the way. I don't know how that's not going to cause a problem. For anybody that uses that as their entrance and exit to the city on a daily basis, or even infrequently coming into town, it is a problem, especially in the morning, in the afternoon, during rush hour, it is a problem. Anybody slows down to take a left into the VFW, or slows down to take a right even into the neighborhood, usually I'm stuck behind somebody who's trying to cut the other people in the left lane off to go straight, because it goes from two lanes down to one. I felt a little bit better, but not much, listening to the people from Towner Center who had the exact same concerns that I did. Things are moving very quickly, citizens are not being aware of what's going on, or being given time, ample time, to prepare, discuss, or be able to come here tonight. The turnaround time for somebody with a family that has kids, it's not very easy to come here and speak, and it's intimidating, to be honest, to be able to come up in front of you and everybody here to even be able to express these thoughts and feelings on a very complicated subject that impacts us. So, just wanted you to come here and speak in opposition to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John S. There, John. He was going to speak on opening toxicans. We'll hold that off, Casey's around. Thomas Kane.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. I'm Thomas Kane, 425 North Lapham. I'm on top of the hill, right above the gate. That's one of my concerns. I've been in business, various businesses, for over thirty years, and I echo some of the thoughts as putting another gas station literally than one mile. You only have four gas stations. We've heard tonight there'll be no increase in traffic. Where's the extra business going to come from to support them? One of those stations will end up boarded up within a couple of years, and then what? We already lost a Clark station a couple of years ago, that's an empty cement lot, it's an eyesore next to the strip mall, Great Clips, to be specific. I have nothing against them coming to town, I'm sure they're a fine organization, but there's got to be a better location for them to do business. And also, it's bad faith to the owners of those other gas stations that have applied, gotten their permits, sell whatever they sell, and do good in the community, whether they're helping other support private programs, paying their taxes, and now they get this bad, bad deal of bad faith. As far as the bridge, it's a substandard bridge, it's a one-lade road that's in terrible repair, it's even hard to walk on. How are you going to run traffic up and down that is beyond me. It's not set up, and it's not structured to handle that level of traffic. If you run that through, remember, there's a middle school at the end of North Lapham, you're going to see a lot of traffic up and down that road for that entire school year. And a day is going to come, somebody mentioned it, I see a semi truck once a week come down there, following his GPS, only to find out it's gated. If that gate's open, how long before one of those goes over the bridge and collapses it? The bridge is not made for that kind of traffic, it's made many years ago for a single car. The other concerns are safety, there's a lot of children in neighborhoods, someone else mentioned that, there are. There are a ton of little kids on bikes. Once a week, I stop my car coming down Lapham because the kids chasing a ball into the street, all right? I don't see a good reason to put it there. It's fine if they want to come to town, but I think they need to do a little more research and find a much better area where they can do better business and be more of an asset to the community than it would be at our location. So, thank you.
Mark Johnson.
Mark Johnson, 545 North Lapham Street. I, you know, I basically live on the bridge. I, you know, I basically live on the bridge, I'm first property north of the bridge. Traffic, when, when the traffic was open during construction of the Thorough Farm subdivision, it was horrendous. It was, it was terrible. You know, they, they came zooming through their, whatever, 30, 40 miles an hour. I can't imagine what a stop sign on either side is going to do. You know, it stops, you know, where are you going to put it, right in front of Riverside Park? And you have Erdman Park on the other side. The traffic congestion there is just too great to handle anything like that. You know, Casey's, welcome to the city, hopefully, they can find another location. I don't think this is the place to go with them, and I strongly oppose opening that gate. Another thought is, Lapham Street in the, in that subdivision, is that built for that much traffic, that much extra traffic? You know, that should be considered. You know, a traffic study should include what I saw when the, when the gate was open. And that's, you know, 14 years ago with less population, and again, you've got the junior high north of there. I hope that gate is never opened. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Jim Morehouse?
Rather than fight that, I'd bring the topics.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, sir.
Jim Morehouse, 502 Thorough Drive.
Please speak in the microphone, get you on record.
Okay. Jim Morehouse, 502 Thorough Drive. I could use 10 minutes on three of the topics tonight that keep coming up, but I'm going to limit my presentation to the condos that are being proposed on the hill. It's Pioneer Ridge condos. And I'm going to give you a short summary of that. I will not spend a lot of time going into the details of how the roadway exit to that new condo went from 11-foot path to a 20-foot path to 24-wide street, not a road, to service those two new condos. Yes, we've always known that they would finish the last two buildings on the hill, so don't say that, "Well, you guys always knew that building was there." Yes, but we did not know that the city was going to run the road to service those condos right between two houses on that pathway that goes to the tower. That little 30-foot easement was planned for access to the tower. And then, I'll try to avoid any personal preference or speculation, and only talk about facts tonight. So, quickly going through summary. The original plan for Pioneer Ridge condos, five buildings, was that they would have access from Lapham up to the hill. Then, and the, there was an indication that the easement path to the water tower would, would be intended as an entrance to the condo building four and five through lots number 32 and 33, right between them. So those houses now will have a street about 10 to 20 feet from their, the side of their house, because that was just a thin path, and that's Exhibit One, that shows how the subdivision was laid out with that easement. And if it was a proper road to access those, then it would have been laid out like Golden View Court, and it'd be about 30 feet, and the houses would be set back. Then, in September, the Plan Commission said there should be an emergency exit for that, and that's Exhibit Four. So, then in July, residents, of 16 residents came to a public meeting, and on the proposed CUP to add 48 condos. And then, the newspaper Focus was here, and that was a big meeting, and it was reported in the paper that, and that article's attached for your, you, that all the commissioners who spoke agreed that they will not approve the project if it includes an access road into the subdivision. And now, there's talk that they're going to make a 24-foot road right through between those two houses. And my, my question to the county is, you would never approve a layout like that in a subdivision, where you take a 30-foot grass strip and make a roadway to 32 units, and the other condos can use that, too. So my question is, why not stick with the original plan? The road going up from Lapham is still there, it's usable by the two existing buildings. Why not the original, use the original plan and make that road service the next two? Don't run that path. So, that's pretty much it. I had one other comment. Oh, for the Casey's CUP, real quickly, 30 seconds. Item in the CUP that was presented, the draft last time, there was a item 25 that said, transferable to anybody that ever, if Casey's didn't take that property, or left that property, that that CUP would be transferable to anybody for any reason, and would not be reviewed by the city or a public hearing. My question is, would that be, could they build a gun shop there without any approval? Could they build a adult bookstore there? I don't know if there's other regulations, but that seems like a funny statement to put in there, that there's no, no approval required if Casey leaves. It's just kind of a weird statement in there, that that's, that CUP will serve anything and everything that's desired in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Jar.
Michael Jar, 271 Thorough Drive. I want to start off by saying I'm delighted that Casey's is interested in Oconomowoc. I love to see people coming here and eager to do business in our town. It does strike me as an odd location, and, and not ideal. And I am concerned with the, somebody else raised the point that with the competition of those four gas stations in such close proximity, should one of them go out of business, we have ourselves another brownfield that we can't develop, and I don't think that's a benefit at all to the community. My bigger concern, or equal concern, I guess, is the, the idea of opening that bridge on Lapham. We've got children that access that bridge on bikes, we've got runners, we've got people who walk their dogs across that bridge. And I don't know if you've all seen that, that little strip, but there are no sidewalks there. There are no alternatives for people on foot, so if you've got cars coming northbound and southbound, and maybe a couple of cars are lined up, do the kids on their bikes get in line with the cars? How do they get across that bridge with the, with the oncoming traffic going both ways? I don't see any safe way of doing that, I don't see any alternative for, for the runners, the walkers, the bikers, and the, and the dog walkers who, to get across that in a, in a safe, in a safe way when there's traffic coming both sides, so. Appreciate your time.
Thanks. John S., is John around? Apparently, John's not here. Is there any other comments that were presented tonight? Hang on. Just give, state your name and address.
Dean Naderstad, 444 North Lapham Street. To me, something struck me as a gentleman made the presentation about the needs assessment for the town, and how many, how much people appreciate the park and recreation. To me, it just dawned on me, you're going to open that baby up with that gate? And then, I'm also the second house, I'm right in the knoll there, and my office is right along Lapham, and I see what many others see, those trucks come flying through. And then, you've got two parks, Ording and what's the other one down there?
Riverside.
Riverside. A lot of people, I walked through there many times, I'm affirming everything that everyone else has said about the amount of appreciation, of the freedom to walk, through that whole, those two park systems right there, you, you open that baby up to a lot more traffic. The other thing of sidewalk, being able to get across for our kids, just the bridge when other people are trying to... To me, the need assessment thing, that, well done, it's going to impact, in my mind, the ability to enjoy those two parks down there, Riverside and Ording, big time. Thank you for the time.
Any other comments? We had your three minutes already. 10 seconds.
Comment about the intoxicants, just, there was a community not far from us, and unfortunately, with my memory, I can't remember where it was, but they just voted this week to not allow what we're thinking about doing it, and the biggest reason was because of the police department. The police and the emergency services there thought it was going to be, that they tried it, they did a test run on it, it was too taxing on the department, and based upon the police department's recommendation, they voted it down. And that just happened this week, and unfortunately, all I can tell you is the community started with an M.
Okay, any other comments? If you already spoke, I mean... No. On the same item?
Yeah, I worked highway construction, and then, two stop signs on a bridge, uncontrolled bridge there. I don't even know if that's legal, I think it's something you got, the engineer's better to check out.
Okay. Yeah, we'll move on to regular business now. Next item, first of all, first real item that we're going to work on is the consent agenda. There's several items, I'm not going to list them all off, but we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second. Any questions, concerns? Go ahead.
Hey, I thought Kruger bought them.
It's under licenses. Diane, I'm assuming that's how they applied, made application as pick and save.
Yeah, it's still pick and save.
It's just a question, that's all.
Yeah. We take the... We take the information right off their applications for renewal.
Kruger's bought Roundy's. And Roundy's own pick and save. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray? Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Committee reports, first one is Finance Committee, and first item is Consider Act on Resolution Authorizing Funds for facade improvement grant for 110 North Main Street. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. This is to complete the full restoration of the Man Block Building at 110 North Main. If you recall, we approved 102, 108 North Main. A portion of this building was condued off. Wanted to find an opportunity to be able to restore the rest of that building, when the contractor is here doing the majority of it. It's obviously a cornerstone structure in downtown Oconomowoc. Working with that owner, I'm trying to obtain the council's approval for the CDA to approve a $15,000 facade grant. They would pursue a $25,000 Oconomowoc loan pool, loan in which the owner would put out, and then $20,000 in equity, so a total investment of $60,000 to complete that project.
Thank you, Bob. Open it up for discussion. Matt?
I voted against the, the huge grant, but I am going to vote in favor of this, because I believe this is what the facade grants were for, was, you know, smaller kind of projects. And then, combined with the loan, it's a good deal, so, thanks, Bob.
Any other comments, concerns? Do you have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to protection and welfare, the first item is Consider Act on An Ordnance to create Section 12.05 of the municipal code, regulating public possession of open intoxicants. This is for the first reading of the ordinance. So moved. Second. Second, and John?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is a draft, a first draft and first reading of the ordinance of public possession of open intoxicants. Dating back to earlier this year, there was a request by the council members to consider drafting this ordinance specifically for special event use in the downtown area. So on May 15th, the original draft was submitted to the common council, and we're bringing it back one more time for considered, consideration review. So the first thing at the bottom of the memo identifies a, a yellow area. I'm sorry, I don't have a slide for everyone this evening, but there's a, a map that identifies the area for the public possession and open intoxicants, that's with all the Aldermen. The ordinance itself, in essence, will allow, if for special events, through the special event process that goes through the Park and Recreation, Forestry Department, with input from the police department, as well as Public Works, in terms of criteria required for special events, would allow those special events to have public possession, open intoxicants, in the area that's identified on the map. So, in essence, it would go from the Village Green, it would include the boat launch area, and the downtown area, and West Wisconsin Avenue, and a little bit of Main Street, and all the way up to the Roundabout for general purposes for everyone that is here. In the committee, there was a significant amount of discussion about it, and there are some recommendations to amend this ordinance prior to the second reading. Those three things included making sure the title is changed to include the language for special event. We wanted to create an exception option for special events that alcohol would not be part of the process. An example of that would be the high school parade. And then, we wanted to make sure there was a defined timeframe of when these events are taking place, and how this public possession of open intoxicants would actually be applied. So those would be additions that would come back at the second reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks. Open it up for discussion. Seeing none, we have a motion and second on the floor, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Next is Consider Act of Ordinance Amending Section 21.03 of the municipal code regarding public entertainment restricted. This would be its first reading, so moved, second.
Thank you. Our current ordinance for public entertainment in restricted did not encompass the true areas that are being used in the community for public events and special events. So, a public entertainment area with the addition of the following language would include Roosevelt Field, City Beach, Fowler Park, and now, the Village Green as well. Public entertainment does require a permit from the Park and Recreation Department, which is the special event process.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller? Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis? Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Okay, moving along, Consider Act on Ordinance Amending Section 21.051 of the municipal code regarding follow-along boardwalk, pier, and gazebo use control. This would be for its first reading. So moved. Second. John?
Thank you. Again, this is a housekeeping, housekeeping item. Prior to the recent redevelopment or reconstruction of the parking lot and the, and the boardwalk area, a gazebo was part of that past existing structure. So in essence of cleaning it up for housekeeping, we, we have removed the word gazebo throughout the ordinance, and then, we've added some additional language in two areas. One, one area is item J, which is on, at the end of the, or on the bottom of the second page. And this particular area talks about, "No person shall moor a boat on the boardwalk or the pier." And mooring would be for an extended duration of time. Boats may be moored to the pier at Fowler Lake Boat Launch, which now has a new pier there in the last year, for up to three hours for transient purposes. So if somebody was on the lake, wanted to come in and park their boat, go grab something to eat downtown and come back and leave, they would have a three-hour period to do that. So it's not permanent mooring, it's temporary mooring or transient boat mooring. The second addition, letter K, indicates amplified music is prohibited on the boardwalk and pier unless a permit, a permit is obtained. What we're trying to prevent there is a vehicle, for example, pulling up, backing up to the boardwalk, I shouldn't say kids, it could be anybody, hanging out and jacking up the music out of the back of their car, which could be a public nuisance. So we're trying to narrow the scope and allow our police department an opportunity for enforcement.
John? Questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Stray? Alderman Kavieski? Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Okay, Consider Act on Ordinance Amending Section 21.09 of the Municipal Code Regarding Dogs in Parks Prohibited. This is for its first reading. Need a motion to, so moved. Do you have the ordinance for its first reading?
First and second, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Unlike the previous ordinance requests, this is not a housekeeping item, this is a new item. For those who are not familiar with our current ordinances, at this time, dogs are not allowed in our public park system, other than a permitted dog walking area, which is located just off the Lake Country Trail, across from Imagination Station, backed by our wastewater treatment plant. It's a park that is not used very often, it's not a true dog park with fencing and management, but it is a space that people can go. But other than that, dogs are not allowed in the park. So our office over the last several years has received a significant number of phone calls, significant to me is 15 to 20, which is a lot on any topic for our department, to consider changing our ordinance to allow dogs in our parks from dog owners. So we've drafted for consideration a new ordinance for the Park and Recreation Board. They reviewed the ordinance, approved the ordinance, voting five to one, to bring it to the common council for consideration. So the new ordinance reflects the following changes. Dogs in parks publicly owned right-of-way, city-owned land and parking lots is prohibited, is the title. The change is, a person who owns, harbors, or keeps a dog may bring it into a city-owned park, publicly owned right-of-way, city-owned land or parking lot, if the dog is on leash and is on a paved pathway, sidewalk, or boardwalk. Item two, there was a minor housekeeping item, we referred to this prohibition, shall not apply to registered seeing eye dogs, we changed that to say service dogs when accompanied by the owner. So service dogs are allowed in our park system at this time. That's a, that's a text change. Number three, there are no changes. And number four was the addition of dogs are prohibited at City Beach, within the fenced area of Imagination Station, at Roosevelt Park, children's play areas, athletic fields, tennis courts, park shelters, restrooms, Veterans Memorial Park, which was an amendment through the committee, or other designated and signed locations. So the intent of that item was to basically clarify pathways and sidewalks and the boardwalk. So somebody was walking a dog in a public park with the new ordinance, and they walked up the sidewalk, then had a branch off of it that went 20 feet and then into the tennis court, and technically that's still paved, but that's not an area that we want dogs to be in. So the intent from the Park and Recreation Board was to allow dogs on leash on sidewalks, pathways, or the boardwalk only, with those exceptions listed earlier. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's open it up for discussion. Matt?
Yeah, Jen, I do have some concerns changing this. What, how do we address dogs on piers? Are we going to allow dogs on piers? We have all these new piers in downtown here, are we going to allow dogs to be on piers, to jump off of piers and do all that kind of jazz?
That's something I have to look in, it's not specific in this part of the ordinance.
My concern is opening the parks up, I mean, parks are supposed to be for people. One of my comments in the committee was, why have we not considered a dog park? I think that, actually, some people commented that that would be a good idea. I personally think that's the better idea, have a designated dog park instead of opening the parks up to everyone. I appreciate that we added Veterans Memorial Park, but our committee did not vote in favor of this and send this on, and obviously it's still on in front of the council, and we can still vote on it. But I think we're, I guess, you give an inch, sometimes people take a mile, and people are already violating that rule, and they're bringing the dogs in the parks anyway, and once we take the signs down and let them bring them in the park, they're not going to just keep them on the path. It's just, I don't, it's not going to happen. People are going to walk their dogs in, and they're going to walk everywhere, and they're going to let them loose, and I think some of the comments from some of the folks about Nature Hill is exactly right. We've gone to Nature Hill dozens of times with our kids, and dogs are running free there. And I think that could happen again, and I don't think that's what our city parks are meant for. So I'll be voting against this.
Lou?
This is something that we've had discussion on for some time, I'm actually very much in favor of this. I like the way it's structured. I know that there are some who aren't in favor of it for the reasons that were presented. However, I have had a lot of discussion with people in my, in my district, in my neighborhood, and an overwhelming majority of them were in favor of it, to the concerns associated with allowing dogs on the piers. I believe what this specifically states is paved areas within the park?
It's paved pathways, sidewalks, or the boardwalk, because that clearly is heavily traveled right now.
All of which would exclude the pier, in my opinion, but to your point, you know, if it specifically called out piers, I don't know if they would abide by it or not, but to me, the language would exclude piers. I believe in passing this type of ordinance, the city's support associated with that, there was some discussion about waste, we don't, we currently don't have waste stations, but there are a couple of locations around Fowler Park that, there are waste bags associated with that, and I believe in our discussion, if this were to pass council, there would be waste stations associated with specific areas that may be heavily used to help accommodate for waste disposal. Is that a fair statement?
That clearly could be implemented, it would be a budgetary item. If we felt this ordinance was appropriate and we wanted to move forward, that could be a component and be considered in the operating budget of 2019.
Well, not quite.
Go ahead.
While I, I think a dog park would be a nice addition, from exercising the animal standpoint, I think there are a lot of residents within our city that take their dog on the walk with them, so they get exercise along with their pet. This will help that part of their walking routine to be in compliance. I think those who are currently taking their dog on leash or off-leash in those areas are clearly violating our ordinance that's currently in place. I think this allows for accommodation and definition for where those pets would be allowed. The only thing that I think would be an added benefit to this, while they're on leash, I think everybody is seeing the retractable leashes that could be 15, 20 feet long, to have some type of four or six or some type of controlled measurement associated with that would be beneficial.
It's already in your ordinance. It must have some pitfall.
Oh, really? That's true. That's true.
Whether or not a muzzle.
Exactly.
Tom, you had a comment?
Oh, I did, I certainly did, I know I forgot what it was. I, I, I agree with Matt, and I agree with Lou. The dogs are going to have a hard time jumping from maybe a concrete onto a bridge and onto the pier. I thank the committee for just allowing the dogs in Veterans Park, because we spent a lot of money on that park, and I've already seen some yellow stuff on one of my bricks in there, so I'm hoping that that all gets taken care of. So I, I think that a dog park is the right way to go, a nice big one, we got all kinds of, that's next, some different parks that we have. How many parks we have here, John? Fifty, forty-eight parks or something?
We have that many properties, I would say 38 active parks.
Thirty-eight, yeah, I think we can designate those two to do that, so.
Chapman Park.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If you're going to have an off-leash park, you have to fence it in.
Yes.
So you're going to have to fence in a 20-acre park.
Well, it doesn't have to be 20 acres.
We'll get the money from Bill.
Yeah.
Derek?
Question for John, would this include any trails too, as part of a park system? If we have some new trails, would that be included as part of the walking area, as long as it was paved?
The way, the way the ordinance was drafted would be paved sidewalks or the boardwalks were hard-surface trails, so I think you're referring to grass or a mulch-type trail.
No, I'm talking about like if we do something along Roseno Creek or whatever, would that...
They would be able to walk on a paved trail.
But they wouldn't without this then, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Well, I guess I'm a little bit torn, but I'd like to let people walk their dogs, and I'd like the responsible people not to be punished and encourage them to call out people that are doing things wrong. It's kind of like the beer garden thing, don't do something, you know, people will abuse it, but if you want to keep it, you gotta, you gotta abide within the rules. So I'm going to vote for this, basically just not to be, to let people walk their dogs along the boardwalks and through our parks and stay on the paved trails, and if they don't, I would, I would hope if they, the people doing it, I'm repeating myself, but I would hope that if the people that wanted this and wanted to abide by it would say something to the people that are not, that are already out there not doing things properly.
Really?
Yeah, Derek, I agree with you entirely. People are doing this already, they're walking their dogs. Chief, you find this enforceable, you'll be able to enforce what this ordinance then?
Yeah, we'll be able to enforce that, because it's a, it's going to simplify it for us. We have people in here with dogs on a leash, we know they're abiding by it, people have their dogs, just letting their dogs run around at large during the grass, it's a different situation. So it's, there's going to be an educational period, there always is, but then when they like we do now, we warn people once, if we have contact with them again, you know, they typically get issued a citation.
Okay, and you have that same issue with dog bites. A lady asked earlier about what happens with dog bites, and the police are well aware of what they should be doing with that.
Yes.
That's okay.
And then...
At the Memorial Day festivities this year, there were dogs on the city beach grass areas and stuff like that, and there were some problems because of that. So to be able to tell people, you can have the dog there, but it's got to be up on the sidewalk, would be a lot better than having it out on the grass. So I am going to be in support of this.
Part of the problem, not part of the problem, but with this ordinance, it's usually complaint-driven unless one of our officers happen across a dog, where we see the majority of the dogs, people walking through the Village Green on the sidewalk, so this will give us that ability. And Matt, to address your issue with dogs jumping off of the pier, once they're off-leash, they're considered a dog at large, and we address that differently.
Mike?
I'm, I'm not in favor of this at all. I don't like, like some of the other comments were made, I want to be able to go to the beach, sit down at the beach, I don't want a dog coming by there sniffing me, sniffing my kids, my grandchildren, whatever. I don't want to see a dog drop trowel two feet away and then have to pick it up while I'm eating lunch. It's nice to have the city beach, I think, pristine without any dogs around it, the dogs can walk on the sidewalk, the dogs can walk all around the block, there's no reason for them to be on the beach or any of the parks.
I thought the city beach was...
It's prohibited.
That park's prohibited.
Yeah, right, but I mean, there's no reason for them to be down it. Tom?
That was one of my comments there, but, you know, there is a $99 fine for dogs in the park after one warning, and it goes up and up and up from there. So hopefully, you know, the chief will take care of that, so.
Yeah, Mike's, Mike's comment, he said it to me off the record here too, on the side too, is, we're adding sidewalk, but dogs can already walk on sidewalks in the community with their homeowners, right?
This is referring to sidewalks within the parks.
Okay, what, are, do we have parks that have, contain sidewalks throughout the entire park?
We have some parks that do not have sidewalks at all. Some of our neighborhood parks.
I'm thinking about like even Fowler, there's not really, is there, there's a little paved path to the pier, I think.
Well, it's the road that goes...
They would walk the arc, the road, and then there's a path, goes, it does go towards the pier or the Girl Scout House.
What I'd like to do is make one little amendment then, I think we should try to keep the dogs off all the new piers they're putting in as well. So I think we should add in, and I'll make the amendment that we add in to section four, right where we talked about Veterans Memorial Park, to include keeping dogs off the piers as well.
So public piers.
Public pier, right, of course, public piers. I'll make that amendment to section four.
You have a second?
Hold on, I'll second that, and then I want to discuss it.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to amend it to keep dogs off of piers.
When somebody's launching their boat, and they want to get their dog in their boat, I guess they might need to use the pier to do that. That's the only thing. And half, there's people who take their dogs out on their boat, so I don't want somebody to get a ticket because they're launching their boat and they're bringing their dog out there.
Throw them in the back of the boat before they throw in the water, maybe you can drive it.
Yeah, I guess I didn't think about that.
Maybe you can water ski.
Doesn't work.
Kevin?
Yeah, I think that's kind of an overkill, because the same thing, I mean, you got a gentleman, or they're going to launch their boat, what are they going to do? Are they going to leave their dog in their car, really?
Well, there's a motion out there, there's a motion and a second, so we have to vote on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, I've launched my boat at La Belle and had the dog with me, and I can't leave the dog in the boat while I go park car and trailer, so I'm going to have to walk the dog with me out on the pier.
Charlie, you could swim out with the dog.
So...
You're supposed to have a train.
You guys are acting like this is impossible.
No, and I understand what you're saying, I just don't think...
You know, Mike, I guess my, my goal with it was to keep the dogs off of the piers, running off the piers, jumping off the piers while you're out there fishing with your kids or whatever, and, you know, it's not going to happen. So I'll withdraw the motion to amend.
Second.
You'll withdraw the second? Who had the second?
Derek.
Is that how I do that?
Yeah, yeah, withdraw the second. Okay, so the amendment's...
Withdraw first, and then you can withdraw yours.
The amendment's off the table now, now, so we're back to the original. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the original ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
That's the first reading, we do have to have a second reading. Next item is, well, I'll take the next two items, we'll discuss the next two items together, but there are two separate resolutions. First is Consider Act of Resolution Granting Renewal of 2018, 2019 Alcohol Beverage License, licenses, and the second one is the resolution expressing intent not to renew, and those are, and Diana will explain that, but let's go with the first one, of resolution granting renewal of 2018, 2019 licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Diane, you want to address that?
Yes, the resolution lists all the licensees that have applied for renewal, they already have a license, so these are all renewals. They meet all Chapter 12 licensing requirements and laws, so therefore, I recommend that council adopt the resolution, so we can, which grants the licenses for each of these licensees.
Okay, so that's for the resolution to grant. Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the questions I had during committee was this Magna LLC, this is the group that came in with the liquor purchases and whatnot to keep their liquor licenses there in the old, what is it, the old tennis, indoor tennis facility behind Olympia there. Have we checked on these guys, whether they're compliant with all fire codes and building Right, so my question maybe was, has that been done for them since they came in last year and pulled the wool over our eyes?
Yes, that has been done, and all the, the three departments that inspected signed off on the inspection sheet as approving their inspection.
Do we check that they're in compliance with the other portions of the ordinance, which is that they're a continuous business? I mean, are they actually selling liquor or are they just faking it?
Our code does not specify days or hours of operation, and if they use it one time a year and they can prove that they, which they have, purchased their alcohol from a wholesaler, they're meeting the codes.
Well, except that our code right now says ninety days if they haven't been in business. So, do we know, do we check that every ninety days they're in business?
No.
Okay.
No.
Is there, is there a method for us potentially in the future for businesses like this that are just attempting to keep the licenses for, just for their own resale purposes at some point, future point, whenever that may come in a decade or two, that we can check that they're actually operating? I mean, we know Crafty Cows operating because they're open right now. I can look across the street and there's people in there drinking a beer. Are we, do we periodically just drive by or have some of them look in the window? I mean, I can do it. I'm happy to.
I, we can't treat any license establishment different from the others, so I, I would believe, and of course, our attorney would have to really weigh in, but if you're going to check on one, you need to check on them all.
So, you have to stop at every one? That's not necessarily true, but Alderman Rozick, you can go by every day and try to buy a beer.
Yeah, but am I official enough for the city to say it hasn't been operating for ninety? I've gone there ninety days in a row and it's not open.
You'd have to be there during all hours of operation.
Okay.
It's very difficult.
Yeah, my wife won't like that.
I'll help you, Matt. I'll help you.
I'd say every Alderman, take a turn, you know, you go, like, you got the eight to ten shift, you got the, whatever.
I'll take two turns.
Is there, so I guess, I guess then, then my questions lead into another thing, which is what, what can we do to amend or work on our ordinances? And maybe it's an action item for us while we're doing our strategic planning process to figure out what we do to look into these type of businesses that we know are just holding the licenses, maybe they're opening one day every ninety days. You know, what can we do? Do they, do we have to mandate hours of operation potentially?
No, you can't actually.
We can't...
It's overwritten under chapter one twenty.
So, we can't, we can't mandate hours of operation?
But I'll talk to you offline, maybe over Crafty Cows.
Yeah, well, okay. If, they might not be open when we get done with this meeting tonight.
Charlie?
Over to you, Derek.
Matt, I have stopped there.
It was a motion. It's non-debatable.
Second.
I have stopped there to see if they've been open at least a dozen times, and I've yet to find it open.
Oh. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? We have a motion in the second on the floor, this is for the renewals. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
The next item is, uh, consider act a resolution expressing intent not to renew the twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty nineteen alcohol beverage licenses, and direct city clerk to send notice of intent to each licensee and set hearing date. We need a motion for the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And in this regards, what, we have one or two?
Two.
Two. And, and the one license for Olympia, they have received a letter of intent to reopen, so there's an investor interested, so just to take that into consideration, there still are issues with that facility though, so, and Diana will explain that.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two licensees on this resolution, and what this means is that as of five PM today, they are not fully compliant with all city codes, our liquor licensing chapter. So, they've been notified, but this resolution now allows me to give them formal notice that the council will have a hearing on the, their license, whether or not to renew, renew that license. So, we're looking at a hearing date of June nineteenth at seven thirty PM. We have to send the, a complaint and a notice, and it has to be delivered to the licensees. They, in the meantime, could comply before June nineteenth, and if they do, then at that meeting, I would bring forth the resolution to grant their license once they're, if they're all in compliance. If they're not in compliance by June nineteenth, then they have the opportunity to speak to you about any of the codes that they do not comply with, and either how they're going to correct that, or if they can't correct it. And then it's, of course, gonna be up to council what to do.
Okay, Matt?
Yeah, Mayor, am I allowed to separate these two out, take two separate votes on these?
Yeah, it's called a motion to separate.
I'm moved to separate the Olympia Resort, the exemption license, from this resolution and create a separate resolution for it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Charlie?
Why?
I, I just think we should talk about these two things separately. I think they're separate issues. They're both non-compliant for different issues, and I think we should talk about them separately. Olympia's got some other issues going on that I think we should talk about, and Sobies, I think we should talk about Sobies too, because they're, it's not their fault.
No, you're right.
You know, and I think we should talk about it separately, because I do think they're separate issues with regard to the revocation.
If I could possibly weigh in, just so we are clear and we understand what's going on here, they both have one issue in that that's in common, that is, they are not compliant with our fire code.
No. Not Sobies.
Sobies is unpaid taxes.
Is the only issue with Olympia is that they've been closed for more than ninety days? Or are there other code issues?
Code, fire issues.
Our, our code mandates that we can't reissue unless they are compliant with all code requirements, separate and apart from the closure thing. All you would be doing is allowing them to try to get compliant by the time we get to the approval on June nineteenth, so they could come in and then talk about the other issue that I think you're concerned about, that if they present a good enough argument...
No, it's different case.
Olympia?
Yeah, Olympia.
It's not, that's not Oracle. You're talking about the...
Yeah, I want to talk about both of them separately, because they're separate issues for revocation.
You want to talk about Sobies and, and the Olympia Resort?
Look, I just want to split them out, and I want a separate vote on each one. I have a motion, and I gave my reason, so, yeah.
We have a motion, so we will take Sobies up first?
Well, I didn't, I didn't do roll call on that, Mayor.
Roll call on motion?
I'm not trying to make the meeting go longer.
Yes, you are.
We have a motion to separate. Do we have any discussion, can you discuss that? Yeah.
Can, oh, can I make it, I just want to find out, you know, to, for people, so it doesn't get around town about the one instance, the Sobies, you know, to explain kind of what the problem is with that, or can we do that or not?
That's part of the goal of the separation, so we can talk about that.
Good.
Okay, any other questions? So, no other questions? We have a motion in the second to separate?
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Nay.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Now, the two, two establishments are separated, so we'll take up Sobies first?
Um, yes, so...
I guess Diane can explain the reasoning why that one is being on the not to renew list? Yes.
So, our code states that if there are any claims owed to the city by a licensee or premises, that it's cause for non-renewal or revocation. The premises owes taxes, property taxes. So, the licensee, Sobies, does not own the building, but their address of the premises, the delinquent taxes comes up. So, we've notified the owner of the building, and of course, we've notified Sobies. And I, you know, I don't know what resolution, if any, will occur, but that would be something to take up at the hearing, but we, it's coming up under the premises, and that's what our code states.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to say with regard to Sobies specifically, was it's not Sobies Restaurant that's not paying something or delinquent, it's the building owner.
Correct.
And we're trying to get the building owner to comply by basically taking away their, you know, liquor license from the person who's renting and paying them money, so it's not Sobies' fault, so, correct.
So be it.
Yeah.
Any other...
So, we're gonna split it again?
No.
That worked so good.
So, the question here is, they're both resolutions to deny.
Right.
So, an aye vote.
No, no, not to deny.
Motion to give her the authority to send them a notice, so they have to come in on the nineteenth to explain...
Why?
Why they should not be denied.
But intent to deny, yeah.
Right.
So, an aye vote would be...
So she can send notice.
So she can send notices.
Right. And schedule the hearing.
But they, so Sobies can still serve up until the time that it's actually revoked.
Up until the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Up until the thirtieth, and hopefully they'll get the property owner to pay the taxes.
Correct.
So, we figure out something by then.
There's not much you can do, I mean, it's an ordinance.
We can't change the ordinance?
Not that fast. Any other discussion? And it's a, yeah, okay. There's no other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Okay. Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Nay.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Okay, the next item we'll take up is Olympia, and you can explain the reasons there.
Olympia, um, it has closed, and it's been closed for more than ninety days, and that is one of our code items, that if the business ceases for ninety or more days, consecutive days, that council could rev, revoke the license or not renew. That is one issue. Another issue is they had their fire inspection, building, and police. The building passed, police passed, but fire inspection has a list of various items, quite, quite a few items that need to be addressed before they could open their doors and operate. They did have delinquent claims to the city, but came into the city, I think it was yesterday. Sometimes it feels like, maybe it was today, but it was yesterday, and they paid their claims. So, that part is no longer a factor. It, but the factors are the cessation of business and the denial for the inspection. And those are the things council would be reviewing at the hearing.
Did they have another claim for liquor?
Thank you, yes. They did have a, also a delinquent claim to a, a liquor vendor, but that has also been paid.
So, they're paid up on all their fines. One thing unique about Olympia is they have an exception license because they have the, the three hundred seat capacity. They do not have a regular license. This license, if it was revoked, does not go back into our pool. It's not something anybody else can use. If we do not renew their license for some reason, then they have to reapply and pay the ten thousand dollar reserve fee. Right now, they don't have to do that with the license that they have. So, there's some situations, some info, you know, things there that hopefully they'll get their issues resolved, or we'll set it up in a way that they can resolve their issues. If they're getting with the letter of intent and to reopen, it's something we may have to work with, so, just to bring that point up. Derek?
I was gonna bring that up, but I, I think they should, we should still give them a notice, though.
Well, they have to have the notice. That's gotta be done.
Right.
So... And hopefully in two weeks, they'll have everything resolved.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to revoke, I am gonna vote to send out the notice to revoke here, because I have voted in the past for people that cease, stopped doing business, and I've stayed consistent with that for a while. If you stop doing business and you just hang, you know, hang it up and then think you can keep the liquor license forever, I don't think that's an appropriate thing, even though it doesn't go back in the pool.
Doesn't go back to us, we don't get it back, so...
Yeah, it's still one of those things where I think you, you need to kind of figure out how to get back in business or, or not. So, I, I do think there's some other concerns, and hopefully the, the folks will raise them on June nineteenth with us.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Call the roll.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Without objection, I'd like to move the new business up ahead now, I'm, just to, we have some items out here, developers' agreements and another resolution of necessity revoking, and the planning commission items are gonna take some time, I think, so I'd like to get that done, so that we don't have to have anybody here that's waiting for those two, three specific developers' agreements to have to wait around, and then we'll get to the utility committee right after we get done with new business. Without objection, can we move that to the front? Okay. So, on our new business, we have, first item is consider act a res, on rescinding motion of, and vote adopting resolution of necessity, eighteen R. two seven three four for three thirty-six West Wisconsin Avenue, so we need a motion to rescind the motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Are you gonna explain that?
Why don't I just take this? You know, you folks, we were given information that the property owners may be interested in looking to the city to acquire this property, it's next to our launch down there, might give us some opportunities. As I always advise, we adopt the resolution of necessity, start the ball rolling, only to find out, very recently, that there's absolutely no interest whatsoever. It was a considered opinion of staff that this body would not want to go forward and actually acquire it through eminent domain, and so, in fairness to the property owner, you don't want to have this resolution necessity hanging over your head, like there might be some condemnation proceedings at some point in time, and in the past, when we've done that, we recommend that we rescind that and just clear the title out. That's why we're here.
Questions?
We didn't order an appraisal on that, did we?
No, we caught it in time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Okay, next we have three developers' agreements. The first one is developers' agreement for Silver Lake Trails Phase Two. We need a motion to approve the developers' agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Mark, are you gonna explain this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item, the first of the three developers' agreements are, is Silver Lake Trails. This is the second phase of their development. This one includes twenty-one lots of the total of fifty-eight out there. It's our standard template. We did have a couple changes due to some legislative changes, very, very minor wording, having, dealing with the issue of building permits, that's been incorporated into the document.
Stand, is there anything significant about the changes?
Not particularly. Not particularly. We're still covered a hundred percent. These developers got together and beat up on the legislature and, yeah, oh yeah, don't shake your head, and created some, some interesting new developments. Primarily, the biggest one would be that they can get their building permits after the binder course is on, we can't hold them up till we get the, up, you know, the top lift after that year. But the bottom line is, they can't get a building permit until they have all the utilities that can serve them, and it's, it's kind of common sense legislation. And so, we took that into account, and across the board, my firm and all fifty municipalities have sorted that out, and we've got a new template, and they're just minor changes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Okay, next is a consider act on developers' agreement for Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Four. We need a motion for its approval. So moved.
Second.
For an additional twenty lots on to what will be a total of two hundred and twenty-two in that development, we haven't had any issues with the other phases of the development, so we're recommending approval.
Questions?
Yeah, I got a question, Mark. You know, along Z there, where their property is, it's blacktopped, is that just temporary sidewalks?
No, that's meant to be a multi-use path that they've installed.
So, I can put my four-wheeler on it?
Mark?
I can put my four-wheeler on it?
No.
Walk your dog on it.
I don't have a dog, and I don't have a four-wheeler, so here we go. All right.
Good, though.
You can take your horse on it.
Oh, yeah. I got hit by a fall ball today.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Call the roll.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Last one is consider act on developers' agreement for Lake Country Village Edition One. This is in the Village of Summit. We need a motion to approve it, for approval. This is, it'll be a total once it's built out, three hundred and five lot subdivision. The application tonight is for fifty-three lots, there's already been sixty-seven done in Phase One, as noted, it is in the Village of Summit. We do have a developers' agreement because the sanitary sewer and water main that are going into this development are city-owned, and for that reason, we need to have the development agreement. Any questions? Matt?
I see the developers are here. When are you guys gonna fix our path out there?
And while you're at it, when are we getting our ass built?
Okay, all right. No, the, every, actually, the development out there behind us is, is going pretty well so far. I think it's, the other side's a parade of homesite, it's looking great over there, so. Nice houses.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Call the roll.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Moving back up to committee reports, utility committee, tonight we have consider act of resolution for the Wisconsin DNR compliance maintenance annual report, the CMI report for two thousand and seventeen. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Evan? Basically, the report card for the wastewater treatment plant that's required by the state for you guys to review every year. If you go to the last two pages, it basically tells you that we scored A's on all the different topics that are part of the compliance maintenance annual report. What I understand from Tom, that's been eight years straight. So, it's just a way for you guys to take and know how the wastewater treatment plant's doing every year, and we need a resolution for you guys to approve it so that we can have, put it together with the state submission.
Thank you. This looks like Alderman Stray's report card.
You sure?
Oh, geez, I thought you said F's.
Got all A's.
Oh, good, thank you.
Kind of vote do you need from him, anyway?
Yeah, there you go.
Alderman Ellis? Do you have any questions or concerns? Alderman Shaw?
No, I just have a comment. We talked a lot about this at the committee level, and just want, we take it for granted that the wastewater treatment plant works great, and this just shows that they do a really good job out there, so make sure you congratulate all the staff. Thank you.
Lou?
I'd like to echo that. It's, it's a lot of fun to be on that committee and see the kind of operation that, that we provide to our citizens through that department.
Any other, go ahead.
Yeah, no, this is just kind of, I don't know. You got a ninety-eight instead of a hundred, what happened? Was there something that, I don't know, can be fixed so that next time when you have this?
Phosphorus.
Phosphorus.
You have to come to the microphone, please.
My, my only, I wanna help, so if there's something we can do to make this a hundred, I wanna do that. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Back to the farmers upstream.
That's what the, the watershed program is supposed to help with.
It's, we had, we went over to our point nine-five on one of our results for milligrams per liter. So, that's how the scoring goes. More times you violate your limits that they give us, that's how we, the score starts dropping, so you, you go from an A to a B to a C to a D.
It's completely out of our control, a hundred percent.
So, there's nothing that we could do next time to keep that at a hundred percent?
We can't. It all depends on what's coming into the treatment plant and how much we can.
Yeah, if you wanna spend a couple, three, four million dollars.
Well, I'm asking because I don't know.
We do everything we possibly can to taking, make sure that we stay within compliance of all permit limits.
You're doing an excellent job. I just wanted more information. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? So, a motion second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to plan commission, the first item is consider act and ordinance to amend the City of Economic Comprehensive Land Use Plan, twenty-ten, twenty-thirty for property located south of Lisbon Road and west of Brown Street, Towner Crest Senior Living, from urban reserve to high-density residential. This is for the first reading. Now, we need a motion to give it its first reading.
Motion made.
Second. Jason?
Very briefly, we did hold a public hearing on this earlier this evening. During that time, I mentioned that the plan commission did review this. They sent this forward with a positive recommendation. It came to you with a seven to zero vote. There was some concerns about the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the ordinance for, regarding safeguards. One of the people that spoke during the public hearing came up and said, if we rezon this and Presbyterian Homes walks away from this project, what's gonna happen? The ordinance and the comp plan amendment are for the plans that we saw this evening only, and second, they have a three-year timeframe that they have to develop the plans within. That was added as per the request of the plan commission, and that's what's in the ordinance that you have in your packets this evening. So, there was some safeguards built in to the, the rezoning ordinance, specific for this project that was discussed at the hearing this evening.
Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for comments. Seeing none, we have a motion and second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Okay, next item is consider act and ordinance to conditionally zone recently annexed lands located south of Lisbon Road and west of Brown Street, the Towner Crest Senior Living, to residential multi-unit high district, and this is for its first reading. You motion to approve the res, the?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. No other comments? It's basically been discussed. Any comments?
I'd just like to make a comment that when we were receiving comments from citizens earlier, that there is some dissatisfaction expressed in regards to process and being heard. I would suggest, at least in my opinion, that council has, has heard concerns, there have been revisions made, and I think the project and the structure of that project that's before us now is, is better than it was when it first came forward. So, I, I'm in support of this, but I just wanted to speak to that specifically, so they, that citizen knows that those concerns were, were heard, and I think we address those concerns appropriately.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Next item is consider act and ordinance to create a planned development, PD twenty-three dash eighteen for property located at the northeast corner of East Wisconsin Avenue and Latton Streets, Casey's General Store. We need a motion to give to the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Jason?
Thank you. I'll give a few comments. The plan commission did review this PD ordinance back on May ninth of two thousand and eighteen. It does come to you with a positive recommendation. It was a split vote, it was five to two. There was some discussions by the plan commission about the expiration date, and that was incorporated into the PD ordinance. It typically is a five-year time window for them to, to build the facility. The plan commission asked that that be changed to only two years. So, that was changed in the ordinance, reduced from five years to two years. This did come before the plan commission and common council, and there was public hearings held, and there was concerns raised at those meetings by the neighbors, by some of the members of the city. They've made a lot of changes since those previous plans, and I'd like to just kind of outline some of the things that, why is this back before you? For example, I, as the city zoning administrator, had concerns with their lighting. They had lighting into the residential property just to the north of them. They've changed that. They've restructured their lighting, and they have zero light levels going on to the adjacent property. They supplied a lot more truck movement diagrams, and I put some of those in your, your packet so you can see. They put different-sized trucks, they, they, they show different vehicles, pedestrian, you know, customer vehicles. They showed the big tankers coming in, of how they can maneuver without hitting other things. So, that's all was to be in the packets. They have a physical barrier now along the sidewalk. They have traffic, impacts have changed. They said before the hundred thousand dollars would be for just Sheldon Road. Now, that hundred thousand dollars is on any public safety, transportation-related thing that the city thinks it needs. The increased of pavement setback along Wisconsin Avenue, they've increased that another several feet, so when you're walking along the sidewalk, they were able to squeeze that a little bit. They provided additional information on the underground tanks, and they offered, or they provided now the offer to purchase on the lands to the north. We didn't have that before. They told us they did attempt to get that property. Now, we have the, the actual offer to purchase with the amount of the value of the, of what the offer was for, it was blacked out. But, so there, they did do, I feel, everything that, that they possibly could in order to make the site work. They still are asking for relief of ten feet from the adjacent property. We have a typical twenty-foot rear yard setback, and they're encroaching ten feet into that. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Thanks. We'll open it up for discussion. Lou?
So, they, they have an offer to purchase. Is that active in negotiation? Is that moving down a road, or is that just a, a, I'll give you X number of dollars?
They made an offer to the Mr. McMichael, the, the property owner, and they gave him a timeframe to respond by, and he chose not to respond or counter, so it's a null and void at this time.
Right.
But they, they did provide that.
So, so we would have to approve that variance with a setback in order for this development to move forward?
Correct.
And if we weren't prepared to do that, then we should vote in negative of this?
You would vote against it, yeah. Derek?
Does this, does this take a five-seven, or it just takes a majority for a PD? Doesn't take?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was concerned, I was at that meeting, and two guys, Dean, one of the guys, I respect their opinions, very much so, on setbacks and everything else that was about Casey's. I, I still have a little concern, I mean, it's nice that they redid a lot of things that people, they listen to people, they move the things around, but I, I thought you were telling me that they were expecting only like one tanker truck a week in there, you, you were coming around there with the traffic, you know, going in and out of there, so, twenty thousand tank fuel.
No, the attorney that represents Casey, Angie Black, who spoke earlier, is here. She gave a letter, and the letter was in your packet, they talked about one delivery vehicle, not the tanker truck, but the, for the store. That was anticipated at one truck per week. Then there'd be, that's the large truck, then they have several smaller ones that would come throughout the week, but the one large delivery truck in the letter was stated as only once a week. We talked about the time of day of the deliveries, and that would be restricted as well.
Well, the tanker trucks aren't too small. They're fifty-five feet, sixty feet, so they could.
Those could be more than once a week.
Yeah. Well, they better be, they won't be selling any gas, 'cause it's like fifty, fifty-nine hundred gallons in, in that part. So, I, but I, I'm still, you know, that roadway out in front is just a hazard, and I just, I'm afraid, I've seen some near misses, I saw somebody get pushed up in front of that house, this car probably fit in with all that junk that's laying around that road. You know, I just, it just scares me, and trying to put that property what they wanted to do, and there's like ten pounds of salt into a four-pound bag, and I also have a concern even with the, all the technology, because it is overlaying one of our wells out there, and I know there was a gas station next to it, but I just worry unless they have a backup generator that, that part, so that's my concerns, that's it.
Lou?
So, this is kind of an interesting one, I, I think, because we have, as a council, have determined that we are not in the business of deciding winners or losers. Where potentially the, the most appropriate location for a, a business may be, or may not be, if that business has done their homework and decided that's where they wanna put their flag. There are other areas of concern for this particular development that I think we have some precedence to, to continue moving down the road. Where I really have a problem is that, that ten-foot setback. They did make a, and, and I think you represented the city well in negotiating this project to the best extent possible, but we have a homeowner that is not selling, and we would infringe upon their, their right to have that setback in place. And I, I think for that reason, from a policy standpoint, I'm not gonna support moving this forward, and I think we should think about what precedence that particular element of this project would set.
Carolyn?
Lou, I agree with you on that. That's where I, I was opposed to this. I was hoping with all the time that Casey has taken this back to redesign it, that that setback, they would, you know, downsize a little bit and get that setback out of there, but with that, trying to waive that setback, I can't support that either.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with both you guys, and it's just such a tough intersection. That right turn, that you're supposed to turn right, everybody zips into left, that's just, I, you know, I love Casey's. We go there to Baskerville and Fennermere all the time, but I just can't support that 'cause of that.
Any other comments? Derek?
Yeah, I voted against this at the plan commission because of the fact that it, it didn't fit our, our zoning, and that's, that's what we put it in place for, and if they, if they wanted it bad enough, they could've made an offer that the guy couldn't refuse on his property. That's my, my opinion of it, and they wouldn't probably have to give us a hundred thousand either then, right? Would they have to give us a hundred thousand?
They never did have to give it to us. No. No, if it conformed to regular zoning.
If they could've taken that hundred thousand and used it towards that, so what I'm saying, I don't know what the offer was, I tried to find out. I know that it, I, I'm not gonna say anymore about it. I, I found out something, but I'm not even gonna bring it up. Anyway, my point is, is if they wanted it bad enough, they would've made an offer to the guy they couldn't refuse, and then we couldn't have prevented it, in my opinion. And that didn't happen, so I'm not in support of it.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm on the other side of things. Despite how many folks came out and spoke, I was a bit taken back by that bunch of people that did come out, and then as soon as they were all done talking, walked away. Instead of waiting to hear us debate the issue, after some folks came up and actually said they don't get enough information and they don't see us debating issues enough, everyone walked out, not waiting the time to actually hear the debate and hear what we discuss and decide. So, I was struck by that. I was struck by some of the things the folks said about, you know, how hard it is to get to meetings, they have, you know, jobs and kids, well, you know, I think we all do on the council, and we do very carefully look at this stuff, but I don't think we should be in the business of just denying someone because they need a small setback. I'm curious, Jason, how many other businesses have we gave them side yard or side lot setback revisions to or variances to?
I haven't researched that. I, I think we're up to about twenty-five planned development districts within the city. Some of those may have been for some setback encroachments, some may not have needed that relief, I'm not really sure, but we, you know, we do give PDs for, for unique situations.
Right. And, and this is a unique situation. I don't think they should have to overpay someone behind them who doesn't wanna move or doesn't wanna sell. The folks behind there in the, the Golden View Estates or whatever built homes or moved into homes above a commercial strip. There's Laurelburgs, there's an auto parts store, there's other gas stations within just we're not going to give an extra ten feet of space to someone, to the house behind them, our planning department has recommended this. I don't think we should be turning businesses away, and I don't think the argument, for me, carries a whole lot of water that, you know, well, there's another gas station up the road, okay? And we, I've, I've had this philosophical discussion several times on this council, what happens if another burger joint comes in and wants to build next to Arby's? We're going to say, well, you can't, or, you know, some other type of burger place next to Culver's, you can't, because it might infringe on Culver's ability to sell burgers? That's not our job, and if we're using the side yard setback as essentially a way just not to vote for this project, I disagree with that. Now, if they get that fixed, I think then we need to obviously vote in favor of it. The only thing I'll, the only comment I'll make is to the attorney who wrote the letter, I think most of it was pretty right, maybe I'll talk to Stan about that later as well. But you did pour a little gas on the fire by saying, these concerns and preferences do not provide a basis, blah, blah, blah. While that may be technically legally true, you know, the concerns are what we do here, and those things are important to what our decision-making process is. Whether we can actually consider it with the CUP or not is a different question. But I, I think I'm going to vote for this change, and I think we're, we're doing the wrong thing here.
Lou?
I'd like to suggest to you that, that by using that ten-foot setback, we're, we are protecting the homeowner's rights, which we are in the business of doing. They, they could have made the offer to purchase that, that home that they, they couldn't refuse, or they could have gone to that homeowner and said, you know what, I understand you don't want to move, but if you could at least give me a letter that shows some support, or, or, none of that occurred. So, listening to everybody that came up and spoke, I, I don't discount all of what we heard. A lot of it was emotional, and that, that's valid, but we, we need to make our decisions based on policy and law and what we can defend. And homeowner's right associated with that setback, I think is a very valid reason to, to vote against this particular development. Not making a decision for winners or losers, but making a decision for a development that has not made the accommodation to fit within, or make attempts to get letters of, I don't want to say compliance, but acceptance of where that development would go as it, as it applies to their property line. So, you know, you're going to vote the way you, you want to, but I'd, I'd just offer to you that that is my reasoning behind this.
Eric?
Yeah, I'd like to just go on the record to say I'm not voting this down because everybody was in here. Even though they're in my district, I don't care, I've listened to them several times, and they, they definitely come in packs. Nobody, nobody from the rest of the city came here and said no to this, that wasn't, everybody, I believe, that was in here was from that subdivision. So, I'm trying to make a citywide decision and be consistent with, with our zoning, and it doesn't, I don't believe it fits in there, it doesn't fit our zoning, that's why they're here asking for it. Otherwise, we'd be all voting yes, so, I just, I'm just trying to make sure that if we are going to make exceptions, it's for exceptional developments, not for fuel stations.
I did, I did get some emails from outside of the, your district up there, but I'm going to reiterate it because I believe it's a safety issue. So, I'm just telling you that setbacks are not, it's just not a feasible road.
Charlie?
I just think that if we allow to build without the setback, you know, that we do waive that and get it, that building right up to the property line, we're actually going to trap water on the neighbor's property, and I don't think that's fair to the neighbor that owns that. Because that's where the drainage goes through.
Yeah, I'm like, I understand where everyone's coming from, and Derek, just so you know, I didn't suggest that you vote, are going to vote one way or another, based on just people being here or anyone. Actually, the folks were actually pretty convincing, which is why I made the comment to the attorney that, you know, you shouldn't discount their, their personal preferences, even though I think their personal preferences are wrong in this instance. We have other PD overlay districts for probably unexceptional developments in the city. And other developments in the city that probably bring less tax money to us than this will, so I, I think we have to be careful about what we're doing here. I, you know, look, it's a busy road, I, the other thing folks said is, you know, it's going to get busier, I just, you know, people don't drive out of their way to go get gas and, you know, bag of chips, you know, you stop at the gas station that's closest to you, I think, you know, maybe the pizza's that exceptional that they're going to drive by Domino's and Rosati's and everywhere else and Pizza Hut to get the pizza there, but, you know, the reality is, we put gas stations a lot of spots in the city, and we've also had problems where we voted down gas stations in spots because we didn't think it was a good enough spot, and we got to be careful, so that's my comment.
Any other comments? Well, I have a couple, and I want Jason to stay up here for this. We did some research on the other gas stations that are within the area, the three other ones downtown, and do you have the lot sizes for those three stations? This one is a certain size, and I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're, we're talking about here, because the size is.
Casey's lot size is one point two-six acres in size, so about one and a quarter acres. The mobile is, is point six-seven acres, so that's maybe about half the size. Speedway is two, it's actually two lots, and that's point seven-six is a combination of both of those, so that's a little more than half the size of Casey's proposed site. And then the Five O's station closest to it is point five-eight acres.
Okay, so this site is a third, at least a third bigger than any of the other sites that are currently hosting gas stations. So, you're judging sizes. This station, proposed station, and the BP station sit near well two, I believe it's well two, right? Okay.
Yes.
The other two that are just down the street here sit just about the same distance from well one. So, the fact that the gas stations are there, that have been there forever, being near a well, and we've never had an issue with it, really shouldn't be an issue.
It's always a first.
Always a first time, it could happen in another one, too, and then what do we do? When, in two thousand three, late two thousand three, early two thousand four, when this subdivision was being approved, a lot of this, and I had Jason go through and look up some of the concerns from the neighbors, and the same concerns were there for building this subdivision as these people now, the people in the subdivision are saying about the gas station. They had issues about safety, they had issues about traffic concerns, they had issues about all sorts of things disrupting the life of the way the people are. So, it really doesn't matter when a development goes in, and we've had the same issue with other areas. I remember when Lakewood went in and the Silver Lake Intermediate School went in, there was concerns from that neighborhood specifically about that school being there. Shouldn't have been put in a residential area, that's what the neighbor said. Well, it's been there for a long time and it's been doing fine, so, no matter what you do, you're going to get, everybody's going to be complaining about specific things. So, that's something that you have to look at. And then the one, I think it was the first woman that spoke, someone mentioned to her what could go there. Well, I did, I did have a check, and these are, these are things that could be put there, now, if this gets turned down, and these things could be put there by right. No public hearing, no certified conditional use permit, none of these. A tavern slash bar slash nightclub could go there, a liquor store, a tattoo parlor, a body piercing, massage therapy, or a convenience store without gas pumps, so any of that stuff could be built on that site tomorrow, without just coming to the Plan Commission with the plans, architectural. So, all those things could be done, and it is a commercial strip. I just wanted to let everybody know those facts before they make their vote. Lou?
I appreciate getting that additional information, and again, to reiterate, all of those concerns that you brought up and, and the development are, are valid, right? But they're encroaching on the rights of a property owner directly to the north with, and it's our, it's part of our job to protect those rights, regardless of the size and the type of development that's being proposed, because it's not all about the money that's being generated by the tax or the type of business or service. If, if Casey's really wanted to be there, they would have adjusted their plan accordingly, so we wouldn't have that conversation with that setback. And to me, this is a property right owner issue, not a, we, we need an extra gas station or a pizza delivery or any of that, because that is, that is an emotional determination. But the setback is, is, is part of our policy, part of our ordinance.
First of all, Mayor, I think your comments were very well taken and very spot on, we don't agree on everything, but I think you're right. Jason, what, has the, the property owner to the north that we're going to be quote-unquote infringing on ever come in and complained? Send a letter complaining about the development, objecting to the development, showing up at a hearing with their planning commission, common council, and voicing his concern about the encroachment upon his property rights? That, by the way, he never said anything, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
He's never, and again, the setback doesn't go into his property, it just means that this building can build or the parking lot can go a little bit closer to the lot line than normally is allowed in that area, right? I mean, we're not building a wall on his property, we're just saying that something can be built a little bit closer, you know, from you to me, to this property owner, who hasn't complained, who hasn't caused any problems, so that, that's my point, and I'm still going to vote for it.
Any other comments?
McNichol was here for one meeting.
Okay.
Plan Commission.
And he objected on the record?
I don't think he ever talked.
No, he didn't, he was just listening.
No, I don't think he ever talked, I would remember, I remember. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, and a second on the floor to approve the ordinance to create a planned development unit. Of course, a I-vote would be for, and a N-vote would be against it. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Nay.
Alderman Ellis?
Nay.
Alderman Swart?
Nay.
Okay, we did new business already, moving on to Mayor appointments, I have an appointment tonight, and tonight I am, I'm going to appoint a gentleman to two, two boards, one is to the Board of Review and one is to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The gentleman is Mark Gempler. Mark Gempler was a, four years at the Waukesha County DA's office, following US Attorney's Office, then four years as a Waukesha County Corporation Council, and after that, twenty-six years as a circuit judge in Waukesha, he recently retired, he lives in town, up by Papp's Farms, and he came in and wants to be involved. So, I think he'd be an excellent choice, I know Stan gave him a very good recommendation.
I can vouch for Mark.
So, I'd like to appoint him with the council confirmation.
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment.
Second? Moved in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rozick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
You were vouching for him?
Yeah.
So, you give a vote no.
Aye.
Alderman Swart?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, staff reports.
As I'm on the clocks.
I'm looking at the clock right behind you.
Yeah.
At least I got two. All right.
That was a good meeting. Great.
Thank you for your.
You found out how many you got, I mean, you want dogs to walk around.
Do I push Jason?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor. The first report, I want to give you an update on the Emerald Ash Bore issue we have in the city of Oconomowoc. I met with Lou on this topic because Merchants Platte, to set the background, we have a significant number of ash trees in the street right of way. They were marked as being infested with Emerald Ash Bore, and it created a stir and almost a panic, saying, what's going to happen, they weren't sure. So, in essence, we held a public information meeting on May eighth, myself, Brian Spencer, I did the presentation, Lou helped moderate the session. We had about sixteen people in attendance, and we covered three significant areas. One was educating them on what EAB really is, what our current operations and plans are, and what our operation options would be in the future. So, real quickly, Emerald Ash Bore, this gives you a little chart about the life cycle, if you're not familiar with it. In the summer, fall, the larvae form an S-shaped galleries and are feeding underneath the bark, so this is an area you don't see, so this corner photo kind of gives you an idea of what that can look like. The larvae over the winter, then, in the bark and outer sapwood start working their way out, then over to the far lower left corner, they go through a pupation process to become adults, and ultimately, the adult begins to emerge in May through August, which is about the time of year we're in now, and the adult only lives two to three months, but they're reproducing and laying eggs of sixty-five to ninety, so that's the life cycle of what we're dealing with here. So, this gives you a little idea of what it looks like from going really right to left, and what that can look like through those various stages. They're very small. Some of the symptoms, if you're curious what the symptoms and signs of EAB, this is a picture to the left is the woodpecker damage that you'll start to see, they're trying to get in and get to that larvae. You can see D-shaped exit holes, and they're literally shaped like a D, so it's an identification piece to see if you have EAB, and those are two of the key things that we see that are very plain in view to our team. There are many others as well, but I'm trying to shorten this up for you. We first found EAB in July of, sixteenth of twenty thirteen, right next to Walgreens over on Thackeray Trail, big hit in that area already to date. So, back in two thousand and eleven, the, the chart on the left shows you the number of counties that quarantined ash wood. In essence, you could take a tree down, the ash wood's supposed to stay in that county, you don't transport this issue to another county. Just seven years late, seven years later, you can see on the right-hand side that it was all over our state. So, it's a fast-moving issue, it's a serious issue, and it's something that we're trying to deal with. So, in two thousand and eleven, we had over four hundred and sixty-three ash trees, we've been slowly removing them, and we find, for various reasons, sometimes they, they were dying on their own for other reasons, sometimes there was damage, or it was a safety issue, or in this case now, they're being infested with EAB. Now, in two thousand and eighteen, we are down to two hundred and seventy-three trees, two hundred and twenty of those are street trees in the public right of way, and about fifty-three in our park system. Our percentages are actually good compared to other communities. I put Merchants Platte up here because they had twenty-nine total trees that were marked in their area. Twenty-four of those were street trees, and five were in parks or public open spaces, there's some median areas in that subdivision that we had some ash trees. And then the other question we asked them is, how many ash trees do you have on your private property? Those are going to be your responsibility, and it was an education opportunity that they need to think about. So, ultimately, how are we handling it? In two thousand and eleven, we did a comprehensive street tree and park tree inventory, I'm not going to read all the numbers to you, but you can see the ash tree is in this column with the four hundred and twenty-nine, and it shows a little bit of our diversity and what we're doing in the community. As you know, through the budgeting process, we've had an annual planting program in the range of thirteen thousand for several years. Over the last two years, you guys supported the initiative of adding an additional fifteen thousand dollars to give us a total of twenty-eight to address this issue. And the way we are addressing it at that time was removing trees when we knew that there was an issue, taking the trees down, grinding out the stumps, and then replacing those trees with other species, and it's been very successful from that perspective. And obviously, that'll be an initiative we'd like to continue for the next couple of years. The bottom statistic talks about how our labor time is spent, and it's, we break it into thirds, it's give or take a little bit depending on the year, but we spend almost seventy-five thousand dollars in labor and resources to actually do that process on an annual basis, which is part of our normal operating budget, it's just a segment of that. So, in two thousand and eighteen, this is another chart showing how the diversity is changing, you see how ashes got down to the two hundred seventy-ish level, and how our other species have become more diversified and gone up in numbers, as we're, we don't plant all maple when we take a, a street tree, a street full of ash trees down, we're diversifying throughout that area to minimize the impacts of some future potential disease or insect that comes into our town or city. So, we provided options to the property owners, so they understood what they can do today related to street trees, but also options that they could implement on their private trees as well. So, the first option is you do nothing, you leave the tree alone, you let it die, it's natural course with the EAB issue or other issues. You risk creating hazards by doing this, because when these trees die, they could fall, they could create other issues, but you're also losing the opportunity of growth time for planting a new tree every year that you wait, it's inevitable, it's going to happen at some point. Not a great option, but it's an option. The second option is, on street trees, we're, we're taking the approach of removing trees with signs of EAB or identified as EAB trees. We remove the stump, we replace the tree or trees, if they have multiple in the street right of way, depending on the space available at that time. We pay for those trees through the funding sources we talked about earlier, and then the property owners could then do the same approach for trees on their own private property. One of the things we deal with with this is occasionally we'll have a property owner who refuses to take a new tree, and we rely on them to assist us because we don't have the manpower to go out and water new trees to the number of times that they truly need to be watered. We don't have the resources to do that, so we ask them if they want a new tree, if they're willing, they're usually willing to participate in the watering process, and our success rate is significantly higher. If they deny the tree... If they deny the tree, we will take those funds and resources and plant them somewhere else in our overall comprehensive street tree areas in the city of homeowners that are interested in doing it and participating. The third option is, and there's a series of different treatments you can do, but there's an insecticide treatment of right-of-way trees that a property owner could do. We've created a new form because of the public information meeting and the process we went through to allow the property owner to submit an application, it's called a Street Tree Maintenance Request Form, to Brian Spencer, our Parks and Forestry Superintendent. He's here this evening, sitting way in the back. I told him to be here at 7:30. Whoops. That's the time you want to start, right?
He'll never make that mistake again.
Yeah, right. So anyways, he will go out and meet with that individual property owner if they are interested in paying for an insecticide approach. They are responsible for going out and hiring a contractor to come in and actually apply that, and they are responsible for paying for it. What people don't understand at first, they do now when Brian meets with them, is that this isn't a one-time deal. You're paying this either annually or biannually, depending on the process you choose to use, for as long as that tree can continue to win the battle, for lack of a better term. Could it last forever? Maybe. It's probably unlikely, but they're investing into that tree. So over the course of time, it's not just $50 or $100 or $200, depending on your choice, it could be thousands by the, you know, 15 years down the road. So this forum really provides homeowners a, a new option, which I think is positive for if they really feel strongly that they want to try to save that tree. But what we're starting to hear and find, that when these contractors are coming and speaking with them, they're sharing the same information that we're sharing with them. This tree's too far along, we don't recommend putting money into it, or this tree is in a stage where maybe you can prolong its life, but understand that at some point, the replacement may be necessary. So I, I, I wanted to share with you what took place at the public information meeting. It's a real issue. I, I think the property owners were receptive and polite and kind through the process, and we also now create a process for the rest of the city to use if they choose to try to do the insecticide process. So that's all I have on the EAB tonight.
Okay. And then you're going to give a report on the, uh...
Yep.
Two-minute annual report?
Yes, sir. So, as you guys all know, we have been doing annual reports for the various departments, and tonight at 11 o'clock is my turn. So today is June 6th, almost.
Volunteer for that one.
What's that?
Way to volunteer for that one.
Yeah, I know, I know. Thank you. So here's our team. This is our full-time crew. The guys with the safety gear on are our maintenance crew. We've got John Dudley, our Parks and Forestry Foreman, Eric Olson, Justin Hollitz, Tim Butson, and Nathan, oh gosh. Thank you, Austin. I knew we had two first names on our team. And then obviously, we've got our administrative staff, Jennifer Fremming, Paige Brunzlick, Jennifer Clayton, and then Brian Spencer and myself. I'm happy to have these guys part of our team. They work hard for us. We hold them to a high standard, and they continue to meet the challenges that we've been going through over the last few years. So our Recreation Services, this is a chart showing the change in recreation programs, a number of participants, how many residents and non-residents that are participating on an annual basis. And on the left-hand side, we talk a little bit about some of the new programs that we offer. Each year, we get, we try to reach out to our existing participants and people that are not participating and offer different styles of exercise and yoga or whatever that may be to continue to keep people interested and stay with the trends. We tend to be pretty successful with those. The number of classes that actually occur versus the number we offer is truly a supply and demand issue. But as you can see, we're very consistent offering in that little over 800 range of programs on an annual basis. You can see over the last three years what we've been doing there. Our Waterfront Services is a big deal. People do use City Beach. There's a lot of people swimming there, but it's more than just open swim. We offer swim lessons, we offer snorkeling and logging, we have watercraft rentals, which is extremely successful. So you can see, just using the watercraft rental as an example, weather drives everything at, at the beach. If you have a crummy year weather-wise, your numbers are, are impacted. If we have a year where we have to close the beach because our water quality isn't meeting what the standards are, for safety purposes, we close it down. It's not just closed for the two days where the water's bad. We get it cleared and it's tested through our wastewater or in-water department on, on a weekly basis, but once somebody sees the sign, they're reluctant to come back for a few days. So I'm not sure I want my kids swimming there because the water's bad. I don't want them to get sick, and I don't blame them. So those types of factors always come into play, but we, we have over, you know, almost had 2,000 rentals of watercrafts back in 2016. Last year, we were around 1,500. It's a constant approach, and then obviously, the admissions and the season passes fluctuate from year to year. Very interest, interested to see what the season bans will be for this year with the new family pass that we've implemented. I know we have people coming into our office, getting them over the last couple of weeks, so it'll be interesting to see how that flushes out. Park Services, some of the things we did last year, we put in new playgrounds back here with the Waterfowler, our Fowler Waterfront Project. We also put a new one in at Blaine Street Park. We had some flooding challenges over by, the picture on the left is at Roosevelt Park, and that fencing you see on the left-hand side is the back edge of Imagination Station. It's a low area, and we have some challenges there, but that requires extra cleaning and other things as it, it brings a lot of debris and things into that facility. We've, obviously, Fong's was, we acquired that, and we added some sidewalk to complete the project as part of the Fowler Waterfront Project as well. River, Lower River Bluff Playground, we reestablished the borders and boundaries and made sure that we had the shock-absorbing surfaces meeting the standards from the playground safety standards requirements that we follow, so that our staff did a great job of making the improvements there. We redid the extension of the performance platform that's at City Beach. You see it on the right side. We went from treated lumber to more of a Trex material, which will give us a longer-lasting product, and it's, it was needed, and it's been beneficial to the civic band and the concerts that take place down there. Westover Tennis Courts on the left was completed last year. We repainted the Boy Scout House at Fowler Park. We talked about Emerald Ash Bore, but this shows some statistics of trees planted, pruned, removed, and stumped ground. I'm not going to spend much time on that because I gave the report earlier. I will talk about this briefly, though. The picture on the far right is all ash tree that we have run through our chipper, and we now use that, and you're allowed to do this, in various parks to, under mulch areas and evergreen trees and things of that nature. So we're reusing the materials that we've taken down and saving money on mulch for certain areas. A good example is Roosevelt Park has a large area of evergreen-type trees between the parking lot and the shelter, and you can't get grass to grow in there, so we've added mulch to those areas, and we've used ash to do that, and it does not spread the disease because we've put it through, and it's the smaller size, so it doesn't impact or spread that insect, insect issue. We are a Tree City USA for 25 years now, and this year, Brian Spencer applied for the Growth Award, and we received it, which means we are investing into our community and, and our urban forests. So Brian, nice job on, on getting that application in and continuing to do what you do to, to reach those significant milestones. We did refinish the last room at the community center. Believe it or not, that room is being rented significantly. We added an additional fee for weddings, if they want to use that for their brides' prep area, groom area, et cetera, but we're also getting a lot of other groups to rent that for meetings. The school district is using it for a lot of testing on a regular basis. So it, it's been a nice improvement. Prior to the flooring and, and the trim work, it basically was a concrete floor, not real appealing, and now it's a little more inviting. Our weddings continue to be successful at the community center. I can honestly say we have gone well beyond what I ever anticipated in the first five years of operation. This next slide shows you a little bit of what we've been doing, and for those of you that may or may not remember, when we first projected the community center rentals, we were hoping to peak at 65 rentals a year. That was the projections and the numbers we used when that project was approved. As you can see, in 2017, we had 38 rentals. We had 174 other types of rentals for other groups. Now, one example of that is the Rotary Clubs are on a regular basis. They come about 48 times a year, but it's 48 uses. They're set up, there's takedown, there's things going on. So the, the use is continuing to grow, and on the far right, you can see how our revenue continues to skyrocket. Last year, with our contracts for food, the beverages, as well as the rental, we were over $154,000. $15,000 of that every year through our initiative, through budget, goes into a fund for future improvements or replacements for that facility. So if we have a major issue come up, we are building a fund to cover that cost through the revenue that's going on. So that's been good, and we're over $91,000 to date this year. Special events, we talked a little bit about that today with the public possession and open intoxicants, but we permit over 70, we did 77 special events, which are festivals, runs, parades, et cetera, last year. Takes a lot of time, and you're working with a lot of volunteers to do it, and I can honestly say we're fortunate to have the number of people that volunteer their time to do these events. It takes a lot of time, a lot of man-hours, so we're grateful for that. This is just a list of special events that we, some of the special events we're managing or involved with in some way. We also rent our park shelters and athletic fields. We did 150, excuse me, 109 park shelter rentals last year and 252 ball-diamond rentals, generating close to $10,000. One of the auxiliary services we offer is discount tickets through our state association. They have contracts with various attractions, primarily in the Wisconsin Dells area, but the Milwaukee Zoo is one of them. We've selected the ones over years that have been most popular to the residents or the people in surrounding Oconomowoc area. It shows you the number of tickets we sell, so there's a, you get a discounted rate. There are other ways to get it as well, but it's been a nice service, and our residents appreciate it. They can get them locally before they head out of town. We have our downtown, our, our community-based banners that we continue to promote the various events and programs that take place in our community. We've, we're in our third year now of that, and we had 87 of those rentals take place throughout the course of the year. As you know, we acquired the 33 and a half acres for the Northeast Regional Park. We completed the Boardwalk Project. As you can see the two photos there, I really liked the, the one from the sky. It really gives you a good feeling what that turned out to be. We constructed the new cold storage building and, working collaboratively with Department of Public Works. You saw the needs assessment summary tonight, so that was completed, and we implemented new registration and facility software, which included the credit card acceptance at our office and at the City Beach, which we did not have in the past. Our Did You Know Initiative continues to tell our story and promote the different things that we do in our department, and it's been, it's helped us get the word out. It's catchy. People have caught on to the, the Did You Know Initiative, the hashtag, so to speak. We have a new football program, if you haven't heard, coming into town, and it's really a collaboration between the school district, the YMCA, and the city. There used to be a youth football board of directors that managed the tackle football program, which started back in 2010. It was run by the city prior to that. Tackle football rules, concussion protocol, training, all the key things for safety in that physical sport are part of this initiative, and the three organizations have worked together to better football and keep kids safe in our community, so you'll see that kicking off this year. Projects for 2018. Well, EAB and planting trees will continue, as you know, through the budgeting initiatives, and then we have our Rosno Creek Trail Design and Bidding Process will begin. We're replacing, or I should say reconstructing, the Fowler Tennis Courts and Basketball Courts. That's under process right now, should be done in another four weeks or so. We have the planning of the Village Green Pavilion, which will go through the Park and Rec Board and ultimately come back to council for consideration. The transient boat dock pier, which we talked about in our strategic planning briefly today, will be addressed here in the near future to move forward with that initiative. The trailhead at City Beach is just about done. We will be putting in those bike racks in the next week or so, and we'll have all the sodding and final landscaping completed as well. We have our Roosevelt Field outfield renovations, new playground above Heritage Park, Champion Field, which was a initiative that was supported by the council to, instead of doing engineering and design work there, to continue to get some work done. So we're doing some improvements to fencing that was, is falling apart and improving the dugout areas there. That'll take place in the fall. And the last thing is the Park and Open Space Plan will be updated, which connects directly to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So, I'm over, I know, but what the heck? It's 10 o'clock. What's the difference?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Any other staff reports?
Nothing else.
Reports and comments of the mayor. I was, I received this when I walked in today. This is a coloring book from Summit School, the fourth graders put together. It's the first ever Oconomowoc High, Oconomowoc Coloring Book, so it's something that there's, you can download it. There's the little quote in the middle there. So it's something kind of cool, and it's got all the kids' names, and there's a number with them, and so you can look at the, look up the picture, and it's got the number of the kid that did it. So very well done, and I'm pretty impressed.
I'd like to add that it is available on the city website. It's been posted out on news and announcements, and you can download the whole coloring book if you want.
This is, this is Stan's coloring.
Stan's book.
This was hot off the press today.
Hot off the press. That's all I have tonight. Reports and comments from Alderman.
According to MK Lifestyle Magazine, a fellow by the name of H. Stanley Riffle has been, there was one of the best attorneys for land use, zoning, eminent domain, and condemnation law. How about that?
We, we should hire him, then. Where's he?
Yeah.
Could I get a raise?
Um, no. Well, there was, there was, there was only one other attorney, and they, they drove him away there, so I don't know him there.
I'd just like to say I was out over, on the Fowler Lake over Memorial Weekend, and every one of those personal spaces was being used on Friday night when I went around there. People were having a great time. The piers were being used by people that were going to the restaurants downtown. It's fantastic. Did a great job, and thanks for the report, too, John.
Any other comments?
Got a brief statement.
Just kidding. He was kidding about the brief part.
Yeah.